Good morning, everyone. I'm Councilmember Shaana Hanif, Chair of the Committee on Immigration. Thank you for joining today's joint hearing with the Committee on Criminal Justice. I'd like to begin by thanking my co-chair, Councilmember Carolina Rivera, Chair of the Committee on Criminal Justice, who is unable to join today but has been instrumental in putting this hearing together. I want to thank my council colleagues, representatives from the administration and public for being here, and to members of the public participating remotely. New York is a proud sanctuary city. As a sanctuary city, New York has the responsibility of keeping immigrants safe and protected from federal immigration agencies that have historically executed punitive policies that result in unjust detention and deportation. Our city has been at the forefront of creating legislation that protects our immigrants from the enforcement of outdated and xenophobic federal immigration policies and the agencies that wield them. From as early as 2011, New York City has limited cooperation with ICE. Local Law 62 of 2011 specifically prohibited the Department of Corrections, or DOC, from detaining immigrants who did not have criminal records. More recently, under Local Law 228 of 2017, New York City prohibited city agencies from partnering with federal immigration authorities and utilizing city resources to enforce federal immigration law. New York City detainer laws also include limitations on when requests to detain an individual for ICE officers can be honored by the DOC, Department of Probations, and NYPD. These limitations are crucial for ensuring that immigrants are not subject to violations of their rights and dignity in our sanctuary city. However, even with the successes of New York City's detainer laws for some, others have been victims of gaps in the laws or blatant violations of the laws. A 2021 City Council Immigration Committee hearing discussed specific cases of individuals who were unjustly treated, arrested, and threatened with deportation in violation of our New York City detainer laws. Today, advocates continue to share examples of these violations occurring, highlighting the urgency to reinforce and improve the protections for our immigrant community. The three immigration committee bills we will discuss in the hearing will strengthen these protections. Majority Leader Powers's bills, Intros 184 and 185, which he will share more about, include additional limitations on how city agencies can interact and implement federal immigration law. In addition to limiting agency interactions with ICE, immigrants need recourse when their rights under these detainer laws are violated. For immigrants interacting with DOC, DOP, or NYPD, detainer law violations can go unnoticed if they do not have legal support or protections. If their rights are violated, immigrants deserve a pathway to voice these violations and access justice. My bill, Intro 158, would create a private right of action for folks whose rights have been violated under New York City detainer laws. This means they would be able to sue the parties responsible for that violation. Under 158, violations of the detainer laws can be exposed and discussed in a court of law, granting immigrants who are victims of these violations a measure of dignity and fairness. I'd like to thank the 17 councilmembers sponsoring this bill, especially co-prime sponsors, Councilmember Krishnan, Chair Rivera, and Majority Leader Powers. It is clear that national immigration reform is necessary and long overdue. While steps are being taken to improve our nation's immigration policies, there is a long way to go before it catches up to the current reality of migration into the United States and provides the dignity that immigrants deserve. In the interim, New York City can continue to be a leader as a sanctuary city and a defender of immigrants' rights. We must. I look forward to learning more about the administration's interactions with New York City detainer laws and how we can work together to strengthen these protections for New York City's immigrant community. I want to thank the committee staff on both committees for their work on this issue, including Jace Riganapathy, Senior Legislative Counsel, Jeremy Whiteman, Legislative Counsel, Rebecca Barilla, Policy Analyst, Florentine Caborie, Principal Finance Analyst, and Jack Story, Unit Head of the Finance Division. I would also like to thank my staff, Chief of Staff Nora Brickner, Legislative Director Alex Liao, Communications Director Michael Whitesides, and Legislative Intern Amy Whitcomb, and everyone working in the background to make this joint hearing run smoothly. I will now be reading a statement on behalf of the Criminal Justice Chair Rivera, who is unable to join us for today's hearing. As I mentioned, she is out on parental leave. Over the course of the past decade, New York City and the City Council in particular has led the way in protecting its immigrant residents. In 2014, the Council passed legislation that removed ICE from Rikers Island and prevented the Department of Corrections, Department of Probation, and the NYPD from unlawfully detaining undocumented people without a judicial warrant. In 2017, during the beginning of the Trump administration, these laws were again strengthened when the Council passed another package of legislation that restricted the use of city resources for immigration enforcement and enhanced our status as a city that welcomes immigrants regardless of xenophobic and cruel national policies. With today's hearing, we are furthering that legacy and reasserting our values as a safe haven for immigrants by advancing three vital pieces of legislation. These bills will close the existing gaps that enable our city's law enforcement agencies to coordinate with federal immigration authorities. I am proud to co-sponsor Intro 158, which would create legal redress for violations of local detainer laws and will help remedy devastating consequences and hold law enforcement officials accountable when they do not adhere to our laws. According to statistics compiled by The Night Clue, between 2017 and 2020, 89 people were transferred to ICE custody as a result of the legal loophole that enables DOC to disclose information to ICE regarding a person's immigration status, release dates, or court appearances. The DOC notification exception violates the spirit of our laws and exposes Black and Brown people, who are the disproportionate targets of law enforcement actions, to the federal deportation machine. Both Intro 184 and Intro 185 will remove these harmful loopholes in our detainer laws and further limit the circumstances that DOC and the NYPD can honor civil immigration detainers. As Chair of the Committee on Criminal Justice, the legislation being considered today has my full support. If we truly want to call ourselves a sanctuary city, all law enforcement policies that lead to ICE arrests and family separation must end. I'd now like to pass it to Majority Leader Powers for his remarks.
Thank you. Nice to see everyone here today. Thank you for letting to the Chair, for letting me speak about Intros 184 and 185, which are we're hearing today, and I'm proud to sponsor along with my colleagues. I want to thank the Chair, both Chairs, and I want to congratulate Councilmember Rivera as well for holding this hearing, and the advocates, and to the advocates who are here today, who worked tirelessly on behalf of immigrant rights in New York City. In my time last term as Chair of Criminal Justice Committee, I spent countless hours engaged on issues of Department of Corrections and ways to improve the system. The term "cultural change" is mentioned repeatedly as DOC worked towards addressing longstanding challenges that resulted in anything but justice for many of the people that lived within the city jail system. The communications between DOC and ICE that we'll discuss today will make it abundantly clear that that cultural change, we don't believe, has happened, and it's critical for the Council to pass legislation to hold DOC accountable. Building on the past detainer laws from 2014, these bills we're hearing today will prohibit local authorities from coordinating with ICE in the detention and deportation of immigrants. This package of legislation will strengthen our existing detainer laws and ensure that NYPD and DOC are upholding the intent and spirit of the law. Intro 184 would prohibit NYPD from holding a person in ICE without a warrant signed by a federal judge, which will bring the local law in line with existing state law. We have heard instances, this goes back to last term, where people were continuing to be detained without a warrant in certain circumstances despite the New York state law requiring otherwise. Similarly, Intro 85 would clear communication between Department of Corrections and ICE despite the existing laws. We have heard reports that DOC staff have continued to facilitate the transfer of people into ICE detention in certain circumstances without a warrant from a federal judge. New York City has always been a city of immigrants, and this legislation is a critical step to ensure that we are protecting immigrant New Yorkers from violence and abuse while in detention and to keep people together. I want to thank Chair Hanif and Chair Rivera for holding this hearing, and my fellow sponsors, committee staff, advocates for their support. I want to thank my staff from the Criminal Justice Committee last term, who really highlighted the need for these issues and these pieces of legislation. And I want to thank the administration for being here today and look forward to hearing their testimony. Thanks.
Thank you so much. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues who've joined us this morning, Councilmember Joseph, Councilmember Ung, Councilmember Narcisse, Councilmember Abreu, and Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning and welcome. My name is Jace Riganapathy. I am counsel to the Committee on Immigration. Before we begin testimony, I'd like to remind everyone that is joining us via Zoom that you will be on mute until you are called on to testify. I will be calling on a panel of public witnesses to testify currently, and then again, we will call the public in panels of four after the conclusion of the administration's testimony. Councilmembers, you will be called on for questions after the full panel has completed their testimony. Please note, we will be limiting councilmembers to five minutes, and for the purposes of this hearing, we will allow a second round of questioning. For the public panel, we do have a two-minute timer, and we do ask that you kind of stick to that clock. We have another hearing in this room at 1:00, so we do have to be very strict with that timer. I will now call on the first panel. We have Alma Maradiga, Daniel Lopez, and Magna Philip. I believe we do have a few interpreters on this panel as well.
My name is Alma Maradiga. Estoy aquí para dar un testimonio de cómo una celebración de cumpleaños se volvió una pesadilla que aún nos sigue pasando factura a mi familia y a nuestra comunidad. And I'm here to talk about how a birthday party turned into a nightmare that continues to impact my family and my community. En la noche del 14 de diciembre de 2019 estábamos en una celebración de cumpleaños cuando un miembro de mi familia cercano fue apresado por la policía. On December 14th of 2019, we were celebrating the birthday of a close member of my family. La policía no solamente tuvo en custodia a mi hijo sino que lo reportó con ICE y minutos después lo transfirió en las mismas unidades de la policía para un departamento de ICE. He was not only arrested by the city but also reported to ICE. Esa pesadilla comenzó cuando, en la mañana de un lunes, siendo yo un empleado esencial de la ciudad de Nueva York, recibí la llamada de que mi hijo estaba bajo custodia de ICE. This nightmare started one Monday morning when I was working as an essential worker for the city and learned that my son was in the custody of ICE. Tres minutos de una llamada puede ser la diferencia con daños colaterales para la familia, la comunidad, y no solamente son daños físicos, son daños socioeconómicos y también emocionales, que esos tienen un precio incalculable. Three minutes can make all the difference in harm and collateral damages to our family, including economic harm and emotional harm. Físico porque nosotros estamos tratando de caminar, buscar ayuda de todas las personas que consideramos que pueden ayudarnos. And physical harm, and we were... Perdón, estaba intentando... Porque estamos buscando la ayuda de las personas que pueden ayudar. Because we had to spend time looking for support from people who could help us. Emocionales porque nosotros empezamos a decidir y pensar qué podemos hacer, qué vamos a hacer, qué viene el nuevo, quién va a estar con nosotros, quién no va a estar con nosotros. Emotional harm because we had to start thinking what can we do, who will help us, who will be with us to help us. Y la decisión de continuar en tu trabajo, desempeñando tus labores, o salir a pedir ayuda en busca de esa persona. And a decision about whether to continue with your work or to leave your work in order to try to seek help for the person you're supporting. Como le dije primero, como empleado esencial, tuve que seguir con mi trabajo a pesar de que necesitaba una ayuda de emergencia. As an essential worker, I had to continue my work even though I needed emergency support. Después de ese día, en la noche, a las 3:00 de la mañana, decidimos salir en busca de ayuda, y bajo de una lluvia, caminamos desde Fulton Street hasta Federal Plaza, buscando la ayuda de, desesperadamente, la ayuda de un abogado que pudiera ayudarnos con la situación. At 3:00 in the morning, we were searching for help. We walked for a time in the rain between Fulton Street and Federal Plaza, looking for someone for an attorney who could help us. El desgaste socioeconómico viene porque la desesperación de ayudar a esa persona te hace sujeto a que muchas personas abusen de tu desesperación y empiecen a cargarte con bastante dinero. El costo económico es bastante grande, pues todos sabemos que la ayuda en abogados de inmigración, si nosotros no tenemos una información correcta en ese momento, se abusa y los cobros y el costo que nosotros pagamos son miles y miles de dólares. The socioeconomic loss is great because we were desperate, we needed help, and when you're in that situation, people take advantage of you. They charge a lot of money. There's a huge cost for private immigration attorneys who, you know, take advantage of you and charge thousands and thousands of dollars. Y entonces viene el desgaste emocional. El desgaste emocional, que no solamente es para nosotros, la persona bajo custodia de ICE, sino que para las personas más cercanas, para los amigos de esas personas cercanas, y como un daño colateral para los empleos, porque nosotros tenemos que decidir, o vamos a pedir la ayuda y vamos a estar ausentes de nuestros trabajos, y nuestros empleadores o las personas que nos necesitan tienen que pensar quién es la persona que nos va a sustituir en ese momento. The emotional loss is not only for the person who's under custody, for the person who's directly impacted, but also for the people close to them. And for those of us who are employees, the employers then have to make a decision about whether they will continue with us. 14 meses de una pesadilla que vino como consecuencia de un error operacional. Fourteen months of a nightmare that came from what was referred to as an operational error. Porque después de una investigación, esa fue la conclusión, que se llegó, que tres minutos que un empleado de la policía o de la ciudad decidió irresponsablemente reportar a ese miembro de mi familia fueron 14 meses durante una pandemia, que todos nuestros recursos estaban prácticamente cerrados. That was the conclusion of a three-minute period that one worker decided to report my son to ICE, and that resulted in fourteen months of a nightmare during a pandemic. Los daños emocionales son incalculables. Hasta el día de hoy, no importa cuántas terapias tú recibas, no importa cuántas personas te apoyen, no importan los resultados. Son cosas que te siguen y siguen por el resto de tu vida. The emotional damages are incalculable, no matter how much therapy, no matter how much support... ¿Pero dónde se puede hacer? Siguen los daños incalculables. The incalculable harms continue. Estoy más que segura que más de un miembro de esta comunidad tiene historia de inmigrantes. I know that more than, there are many members of this community that have immigrant stories. Entonces, ¿por qué no valoramos unos con los otros? ¿Por qué no trabajamos unos con otros juntos para salir adelante? Why don't we work together to move forward? En vez de estar tratando de dividirnos como comunidad, deberíamos de estar enfocados en hacer una unión permanente. Instead of dividing ourselves, we need to come together to have a permanent union. En nuestros países, nosotros hemos adquirido bastantes conocimientos, bastantes habilidades, que si en este lugar, en vez de dividirnos, se nos aprovechara y se nos diera el valor que nosotros merecemos, seríamos más grandes que nunca. ¿Por fin te la última factura? Si se nos aprovechara, los conocimientos y habilidades que nosotros tenemos, seríamos más grandes que nunca. If we could take advantage of the knowledge and the abilities that we have, it would benefit all of us to move forward. Apologies. ¿Otra cosa? Una vez más, quisiera decirle gracias por tenerme aquí, por dar este testimonio, y por favor, trabajemos juntos, seamos un poquito más humanos. Thank you for coming together, for hearing my testimony, and please, let's work together. Let's be more humane. Gracias. Thank you.
Hola, mi nombre es Daniel, Daniel López, y bueno, estoy aquí para compartir mi historia. Mi historia comienza en el 2020 cuando fui arrestado por ICE. Estimados concejales, hoy estoy aquí para hablar sobre un tema que es extremadamente importante para mí, y creo que hará que nuestra ciudad sea más fuerte y que los inmigrantes newyorkinos se sientan más seguros en nuestra ciudad. Como newyorkino, estoy profundamente preocupado por las brechas en las protecciones que tienen los inmigrantes cuando se trata de que la ciudad cooperé con ICE, razón por la cual estoy aquí para abogar por la aprobación de las introducciones 184, 185, y 158, que tiene un lenguaje claro que detendrá cualquier tipo de colisión entre la ciudad y ICE. Además, quiero agradecer a los concejales Rivera, Hanif, y Powers por liderar la carga para avanzar estas legislaciones.
I'm going to translate for Daniel. Hi, I'm Daniel López. I'm going to share my story. Esteemed councilmembers, I'm here today to talk about an issue that is extremely important to me and that I believe will make our city stronger and immigrant New Yorkers feel safer in our great city. As a New Yorker, I am deeply concerned by the gaps in the protections that immigrants have when it comes to the city cooperating with ICE, which is why I'm here to advocate for the passage of Intros 184, 185, and 158 that have clear language that will stop any sort of collusion between the ICE, between the city and ICE. Additionally, I want to thank Councilmembers Rivera, Hanif, and Powers for leading the charge in moving these legislations forward.
Mi historia comienza en el 2020 cuando fui arrestado por ICE con la ayuda de la policía. Ese verano, ICE llegó a mi casa sin previo aviso y comenzó a tocar violentamente la puerta de mi apartamento. Ya que no se identificaron como ICE, me asusté y me escondí en mi habitación y llamé a la policía, que pensé que me ayudarían a averiguar quiénes eran estos extraños. Cuando llegó la policía, me dijeron que saliera para hablar con ellos, y me aseguraron que no pasaba nada, que no había nadie en allá. Cuando salí de mi habitación, me di cuenta que algo andaba mal, y fue entonces que los policías me permitieron a mí ser detenido por ICE, quienes estaban esperándome, aunque la policía me había dicho que no había nadie. A pesar de mi protesta y convoción, fui arrestado y deportado a México rápidamente, donde estuve casi por dos años.
My story begins back in 2020 when I was arrested by ICE with the help of the police. That summer, ICE arrived at my house unannounced and began to violently knock on my apartment door. Since they did not identify themselves as ICE, I was scared and hid in my room and called the police, who I thought would help find out who these strangers were. When the police arrived, they told me to come out of my room to talk to them and assure me that nothing was wrong. No one was there. When I came out of my room, I realized that something was off. A police officer told me I had to go with ICE and allowed me to be detained by ICE agents who appear, despite what the NYPD officers had told me in the beginning. Despite my protest and shock, I was arrested and quickly deported back to Mexico, where I had, where I ended staying for about two years.
Pueden imaginarse mi convoción y decepción que la policía, a la cual acudí a buscar ayuda, fue la que ayudó a hacer mi arresto. Siempre entendí que se suponía que la policía no debería cooperar con ICE, y nunca, nunca los habría llamado si hubiera sabido que iban a violar mis derechos. Ser deportado causó un estrés extremo y un trauma para mi familia y para mí. Estaban tan angustiados en México, pensando que nunca volvería a ver a mi familia. Fue gracias a la tremenda ayuda de Make the Road que pude regresar a Nueva York y ruinirme con mis seres queridos después de casi dos años de estar separados de ellos. Es hora de que este consejo ayude a aprobar legislaciones para proteger a los miembros de nuestra comunidad de situaciones como estas. Muchas veces, los inmigrantes se sienten impotentes y temerosos de interactuar con las agencias de la ciudad porque saben que ICE podría cambiar sus vidas en cualquier momento. Además, si se violan sus derechos, los inmigrantes no tienen forma de responsabilizar a ICE, dado que es una agencia no regulada. Este consejo tiene la oportunidad de intensificar y hacer lo correcto, aprobar las introducciones 184, 185, y 158, que garantizarían que no hay comunicación entre ICE y el Departamento de Policía de Nueva York o el Departamento de Corrección. Evitar mantener a las personas detenidas más tiempo del requerido para felicitar el arresto de ICE y permitir que una persona busque un derecho privado de acción, que le ayudaría a iniciar una acción legal si se violan sus derechos. Esta es la única forma que los inmigrantes como yo podemos realmente, inmigrantes como yo podemos sentirnos realmente seguros en la ciudad de Nueva York. Es el lugar que a menudo se promociona como una ciudad santuario, que a menudo no se siente como tal. Gracias por su tiempo.
You can imagine my shock and disappointment that the police, who had reached out for help, were the ones that ate ICE in my arrest. I always understood that the police were not supposed to cooperate with ICE, and I would never have called them if I knew that my rights were going to be violated. Being deported caused extreme stress and trauma to my family and myself. I was so distraught in Mexico, thinking that I will never see my family again. Thanks to the tremendous advocacy of Make the Road New York, that I was able to come back to New York and reunite with my loved ones after almost two years of being separated from them. It's time for this council to help pass legislation to protect our community members from situations like this. Oftentimes, immigrants feel unempowered and afraid to interact with city agents because they know that their lives could be upended by ICE at any moment. Additionally, if their rights are violated, immigrant New Yorkers don't have a way to hold ICE accountable, given that they are such an unregulated agency. This council has an opportunity to step up and do the right thing by passing Intros 184, 185, and 158, which will make sure that there is no communication between ICE and the New York Police Department or the Department of Corrections, prevent individuals to be held beyond the required time in order to facilitate ICE arrest, and to allow an individual to seek a private right of action that will help them start legal action if their rights are violated. This is the only way that immigrants like myself can truly feel safe in New York City, a place that is often called as a sanctuary city, but that oftentimes does not feel like it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you to my fellow panel members, and thank you to the City Council for holding this hearing. My name is Magna Philip. I am a special litigation attorney at the Neighborhood Defender Service of Harlem. I'm an immigrant New Yorker. I'm joined here by my colleague.
I'm Scott Faletta, Immigration Counsel for our client, Alexi Rasputny.
We're here to speak to the experience of our client, Alexi Rasputny, a 46-year-old New Yorker who came to this country from Ukraine when he was a teenager. On September 15th of 2022, just this last year, Mr. Rasputny was in Manhattan Supreme Court for a routine court appearance, where a judge ordered that he be taken into DOC custody temporarily for a week until a hearing could be held in his case. And his attorney left him with two investigators from the Manhattan DA's office and believed them to be taking him into DOC custody. DOC did not take him into their custody. Instead, a few days later, his attorney received a distressed call from him, and Mr. Rasputny was no longer in New York. He was not at Rikers Island. He was instead at an immigrant detention facility in Pennsylvania, where- where his understanding is that he was facing deportation to Ukraine. He had never previously been in ICE custody before this. I spoke with Mr. Rasputin last week about what his experience was like, and he wanted me to share the following words with the city council. "I did not expect this at all. I couldn't understand what was going on. I did not understand why this was happening to me. The DA detectives did not tell me what was happening. The NYPD officers did not tell me what was happening. No one explained anything to me. They just handed me to the people from immigration. They didn't answer my questions. They said they are going to take me anywhere they want, probably to a different state because it's federal." They took me to Federal Plaza, they took my fingerprints, they took me downstairs, put me in a van, and drove me away. In the van, I didn't know where they were taking me. It was nighttime. I couldn't really see where we were going. I felt like I was being kidnapped. I didn't know where I was. I was expecting to go to Rikers. I reached there in the middle of the night. I was handed off, and when I got into the unit, other people told me where I was, that it was an ICE prison. They said they are going to deport us. I was really scared and sad and angry. The country I'm going back to, I haven't been for 29 years, and it's at war. My life is here. I don't want to go back to ICE custody. I'm scared for my life, and I don't want to go back to Ukraine. I was surprised that New York City would do this and hand me over. I thought New York didn't hand over its people like that. This whole country is made up of immigrants. I don't know why they did that. It was terrible how they treated me. Mr. Rasputin is now back in DOC custody at Rikers because the Manhattan DA's office scrambled to bring him back here to continue to prosecute him when they realized what had happened. But he has not received any help from the mayor's office, from the DA's office, from NYPD or DOC to rectify what happened to him, and he expects that at the end of his time at Rikers, where he's serving time on a misdemeanor case, he's going to be handed back over to ICE custody. This happened in September of 2022. This is not a remote issue here. This is not a faraway issue. These problems continue to occur, and this is exactly why the loopholes in the detainer laws must be closed. And Mr. Rasputin, as it stands now, has no way to seek redress for the violations of the detainer laws that occurred because there is no private right of action. So, these rights without remedies are not rights at all. And I encourage the city council to ask questions of the mayor's office of DOC, of NYPD, as to what happened in Mr. Rasputin's case and what the city can do to support him and to pass these bills urgently. Thank you.
Thank you to this powerful panel. These are heartbreaking stories to take in. For each panelist, could you repeat one more time what year? So, for you, Alma, when was your son arrested by the NYPD? What year?
2019.
2019.
Yes.
And then, Daniel, when were you arrested by the NYPD?
2020.
2022.
No, 2020.
2020. And then for Magna and Scott, which year was Alexei detained by DOC?
He was taken to ICE custody in 2022.
Thank you so much for kicking off our hearing. Appreciate it. We actually have a question from Councilmember Narcisse for this panel, and I'd like to acknowledge that we've been joined by councilmembers Schulman, De La Rosa, Krishnan, Moya. Great. Councilmember Narcisse.
Good morning. As an immigrant myself, listening to you, that really break my heart and that really put a hole in the fabric, the very fabric of New York City, what we stand for. So, my question, what's your son's name again? I forgot.
Javier Castillo.
Okay. So, how long were he detained for?
14 months.
Okay. Were you able to visit?
Like, two, three times, but, you know, remember, we was under pandemic, so the ICE and all facility was closed, so that's a stop. So, the last time I saw him is after like six, eight months after, you know, they detained him, and it's just to say like, for me on that minute, bye, and good luck on our country.
Were you able to see any lawyers? Do you offer, did anyone ask you? Do you want someone to represent him? No?
Okay, no. Nosotros buscamos una ayuda primero con caridades católicas. Fue cuando fuimos a las tres de la mañana porque es dependiendo la hora que tú llegas y esperar hasta que abrieran a las ocho de la mañana. Después de ese tiempo, estuvimos buscando algún abogado que nos recomendaran para ese caso y fue cuando llegamos a Federal Plaza enfrente y contratamos un abogado privado.
First, initially, when we were looking for counsel, we went to a Catholic Charities office when they opened early in the morning. From there, we had been recommended an attorney near Federal Plaza, who we went to see, who was a private attorney.
Después de eso, el abogado nunca pudo visitarlo. Estuvo en New Jersey. Después de New Jersey, lo trasladaron a Goshen, y fue cuando cerraron las facilidades de ICE.
From there, that attorney never visited him. He was detained first in New Jersey and then in Goshen, and that was when they quecitaron por las visitas. And that was when ICE had closed for visitation during the pandemic.
Mentally, I know this can be a trauma too. I mean, for me as a nurse, I want to know the medical part of it, the status, where he offered anyone in medical, did he have any doctors visiting him, giving a thorough assessment to make sure mentally and physically he was okay?
En ese momento, no.
At that time, no.
Thank you. Before I go, one more question for the lawyers. Your client, he was in the US for, in New York per se, for 29, I mean, 29 years?
Yes, that's correct.
He was here for 29 years. So, any explanation giving to him, how, you know, any problem? Did he encounter, I hate to ask that question, did he encounter anything that should put him in that position for police to come to his door?
No, and in fact, if the detainer law had been followed, he never would have been transferred to ICE custody in the first place. He never would have had that contact with ICE.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I don't want to take too long. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Joseph.
Thank you. Good morning. Question is to the attorneys, how often does this happen? And when it does happen, what are the things to remedy that situation? And how long does it take?
So, in Mr. Rasputin's case, immediately after being transferred to ICE custody, he was placed in removal proceedings. And so now, he's sort of in a path that can't be turned back. He is in removal proceedings, and, you know, we are going to be fighting on his behalf, obviously, but it's very possible that he could lose his case and be ordered removed to Ukraine. And there's really nothing that we can do to walk back the clock because removal proceedings have already been started.
And again, this resulted from violations of the detainer law, of the State Protect Our Courts Act, of his privilege against an arrest at a courthouse. And yeah, we will be fighting to protect him from return to ICE, but there was no reason he should have been turned over in the first place by NYPD, DOC, and the Manhattan DA's office. There was no judicial warrant from a federal judge for his arrest, and he had never previously been in ICE custody.
How often do you see cases like this?
This is the first case of this type that has come to us. But, you know, we've relied on these protections very much because during the Trump administration and before the Protect Our Courts Act passed, our clients were arrested from the courthouse all the time. And our clients rely on these protections on a daily basis. So, in cases like this that slip through the cracks, our client has no remedy under the detainer law to do anything about the violation that happened to him. And that's one of the reasons why these laws need to be strengthened.
Thank you. Thank you. I have a question for Alma. I know you mentioned that the NYPD admits that they made an operational error. Have they provided any support in any way after admitting the harm that they did to you and your family?
Never.
Never?
No.
Councilmember Abreu, you had a question?
I have a question for the lawyers as well. Can you please speak to the city's involvement with respect to how your client ended up with ICE? Because I'm going to be expecting testimony suggesting that the city had no involvement in the transfers, but it seems like the city in this past year alone has been involved. Can you please speak to that?
Sure. So, we're trying to get more information about this as well. Our understanding from our client is that he was taken by NYPD officers as well as Manhattan DA investigators, and it's also possible that DOC officers participated in some communication to ICE. He was detained at the courthouse at Manhattan Criminal Court while they waited for ICE to come and get him, and then they handed him over to ICE officers. And in terms of why this occurred, what the communications were between those agencies and ICE, we would welcome more information and investigation by the mayor's office into what happened here. We have not received any such investigation at this point. We were told that there are internal investigations happening in some of these agencies as to what happened, but we haven't heard any answers specifically.
And do you have any idea as to which officers may have been involved?
We don't know the names of the officers.
Okay. I sure hope that we get answers to those questions. Go ahead.
I'll just add that our understanding from what our client has told us and what we've been told otherwise is that he was taken to DOC. DOC refused to take him into custody. He was taken to NYPD, an NYPD sergeant called ICE, and then the two district attorney investigators who were with him held him and waited for ICE and physically transferred him to ICE custody.
Do you know there were body cameras in that incident?
We don't know at this point.
All right. We should get answers to these questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hanif, if I can add something too?
Yes.
So, this is Daisy Flores with Midgard New York. Just wanted to add that similar to the other case, in Daniel's case, he's been living in New York City for almost 20 years, almost his whole life, when this happened. And then he was away in Mexico for almost two years, which, of course, we cannot give him back. But that was definitely the impact of this case and of the collaboration between ICE and the police.
Thank you for that, and thank you, Councilmember Abreu, for your questions. We will be able to dig in a little bit more with the administration. Do any of my other colleagues have any questions for this panel? Saying none, thank you, and I'd like to acknowledge...
That I want to ask, how many detainees that by now from, let's say, this year, for example, do you know the statistic on that? That ICE pick up from our city?
No, I don't.
I'm happy to just say one thing in response to that, which is that, you know, the city is obligated to report annually on, you know, both the DOC and the NYPD have to report annually on their communications with ICE. But I think what you'll hear today from the testimony that will follow the administration is that we believe that that is severely, severely misrepresenting the volume of communication and collusion that we know and believe and will explain happens on a regular basis. So unfortunately, we can't answer that question because the numbers are far larger than those which are reported by the city, and we'll get to that with testimony later today.
Because I'm very concerned to have people that live 20-something years and out of the blue, like this young man just said, and just pick up in the nighttime and leave their family behind. And the trauma that we're dealing with, the high-risk neighborhood, and I believe that's where mostly, probably, that's where they're taking place. And we cannot live in a blind. We have to know exactly what's going on. So, I'm sure the chair will take care of that, so ask the question to follow. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Narcisse, and I'm really appreciative of my colleagues for being here, to hear from impacted folks and legal service providers. We will hear more public testimony later, but wanted to begin today's hearing, hearing directly from folks who've been impacted and frustrated with the ways in which that the NYPD, DOC, and the city continues to collaborate with ICE in participating in the federal mass deportation machine. I'd like to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Stevens. And pass it back to Jay Street.
Thank you, Chair. I will now call on the following members of the administration to testify. Paul Scheckman, General Counsel at DOC; Michael Clark, Director of Legislative Affairs Unit at NYPD; Heidi Grossman, Executive Director and Special Counsel for the Criminal Justice Bureau at NYPD; Wayne McKenzie, General Counsel at the Department of Probations; and Miguel Santana, Chief of Staff at Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs. And I will administer the oath once they're settled. Can you please raise your right hands? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee, these committees, and to respond honestly to council member questions?
I do.
I do.
Thank you. Mr. Scheckman, you can begin when you're ready.
Thank you. Good morning. Good morning, Chair Hanif, Chair Rivera in absentia, and members of the Immigration Committee and the Criminal Justice Committee. My name is Paul Scheckman, and I'm the General Counsel for the New York City Department of Correction. Thank you for the opportunity to testify about the department's practices with respect to detainer laws. My remarks this morning will be brief. The department's policy is this. If the department receives a detainer from Immigration and Customs Enforcement from ICE, we will notify ICE of an individual's relief only if the individual is on Rikers Island, and one, he has a qualifying conviction, meaning a conviction for a violent or otherwise serious offense within the past five years, or two, he is identified to us as a possible match in the terrorist database, and the request for that individual is supported by a document demonstrating probable cause. Our notification is made when the discharge process begins. Importantly, we will not hold an individual for an ICE pickup beyond the time that the individual is authorized to be released from our custody under local or state law, which is to say, if ICE is late, we do not wait. Perhaps most significantly, if this criteria are not met, if there is no qualifying conviction or no terrorist database match, we will not communicate further with ICE about the individual in question and not facilitate a transfer to ICE custody. We do not honor ICE detention, detainers. The department's public reporting reflects this policy. Between July 2021 and June 2022, which is to say fiscal year 2022, federal immigration authorities lodged 92 detainers, and only eight individuals were released to federal authorities. So far, in fiscal year 2023, we have received 109 detainers and released three individuals to federal authorities. We do not view our job as enforcing immigration laws. I thank you for the opportunity to testify today, and I'm happy to answer your questions.
Good morning, Chair Hanif, and I'd like to extend congratulations to Chair Rivera on behalf of the NYPD and members of the council. I am Michael Clark. I'm the Director of Legislative Affairs Unit for the New York City Police Department, and I'm joined today here by Executive Director and Special Counsel Heidi Grossman of the Department's Criminal Justice Bureau, as well as our colleagues from the Department of Corrections, the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs, and the Department of Probation. On behalf of Police Commissioner Kichenel Sewell, I'm here to testify before your committees regarding the department's policies and procedures around federal civil immigration detainer requests. At the outset, it's important to state unequivocally that the NYPD does not gauge an immigration enforcement. It is vitally important that all members of the public feel comfortable coming to the police for help, especially when they are victims of crime. Undocumented immigrants should not fear deportation if they need to ex- Undocumented immigrants should not fear deportation if they need to access, access police services, and our vulnerable community members should not remain victims in the dark. Unreported crimes skew how we analyze crime trends and enters our ability to dedicate resources where it'll be most effective. Moreover, if certain groups of New Yorkers do not feel confident they can interact with the police, they will become permanent victims to be preyed upon by criminals with no fear of the consequences of their actions. In our last reporting period, we received 157 detainer requests from ICE. We honored zero of those requests, and we transferred zero people to the custody of ICE. In the previous reporting period, we received 1,485 detainer requests. Again, we honored zero and transferred zero people to the custody of ICE. I would like now to turn to two of the bills being heard today. Intro 184 would eliminate the exception in the law that allows the department to hold individuals after receiving a detainer request without a judicial warrant for up to 48 hours under certain circumstances, when it is anticipated that a judicial warrant will be presented within 48 hours. The Department does not employ this exception to hold individuals and has not for quite some time. The administration has no position on this legislation. Intro 185, 158A would create a personal cause of action against any employee of the NYPD, Department of Probation, Department of Correction, as well against the either department for any violation of any law restricting when and how an ICE immigration detainer request may be honored and potentially for violations of other related laws. This would apparently be a strict liability cause of action for officers and the city, even when acting in good faith. This bill thus wholly reverses the original and longstanding city council determination codified in present law that while city agencies would implement a policy of non-cooperation with immigration enforcement, the city would not subject itself and its agencies and employees to liability for the unfortunate occasional instance, almost always inadvertent, when agencies fall short of that goal. In reversing that determination by the council, this bill would undermine valid defenses the city and an officer can utilize and even authorizes punitive damages, which are especially problematic. It further allows the plaintiff to elect an award of at least $30,000 that can be imposed without having to prove damages. This bill would thus convert a beneficial city policy into an opportunity for plaintiffs bar to exploit difficult situations that present themselves to city agencies. By newly placing issues related to implementation of that policy in a fraught litigation context, the bill could actually impede the city's ability to learn from those situations and report on them in, in the event of a mistake. The bill would, uh, the bill would also place onerous and unworkable obligations on officers to not only notify the individual and their attorney of the detainer request, but also provide detailed records on what ICE, on every contact with ICE regarding that person, whether the detainer is honored or not. The administration opposes this legislation. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on this important issue, and we look forward to answering the questions you may have.
Thank you. So, I'd like to begin with some questions for the DOC. After the 2014 laws, advocates began to worry DOC was delaying release of people in their custody and otherwise facilitating ICE arrests, identifying immigrants where they would ask ICE to lodge a detainer and providing information to ICE about detained New Yorkers. In 2018, the Immigrant Defense Project, Black Alliance for Just Immigration, and NYU filed a FOIL which requested information about DOC and ICE communication related to people in DOC's custody. This resulted in emails being produced between DOC and ICE. So, I will begin my questioning around the communication between DOC and ICE in these emails. Does DOC communicate and share information with ICE about people who do not have a conviction or qualifying offense?
No.
I have an email here from the DOC FOIL on December 18, 2017.
Can I, can I pause for a second? If the question is, do we do it now? The answer is no. I'm not familiar with what we did in 2017. If we communicated, then I, I think under the city law, it was inappropriate. But the short answer to your question now is no.
That's fine. We want to really elaborate on the culture that has existed, and it would be really important for us to hear from you, even if you do not have the information about the particular emails.
It's fine.
Captain Deshaun Rainey and ICE Officer Robert Spirugia, where ICE had sent a list of detained individuals with information taken from the inmate locator system, and DOC tells ICE that one person appears to be a youthful offender adjudication or dismissal, and that there is no detainer, and another two of the persons have not yet been sentenced. ICE then asks, "The two that are pending sentence, upon conclusion of sentencing, would their detainers be honored?" And DOC responded, "Yes, let's hope they both go upstate." How do you explain this?
I, I don't. As I read that, that is not consistent with city law.
Right. It is inconsistent, and it shows collaboration in violation of the detainer laws.
I, I don't mean to be difficult, but it shows collaboration in 2017. It would not happen today.
To move on, does DOC ever delay release of the, for the purpose of facilitating ICE arrests?
No.
I have another email dating back to 2017 between Captain Deshaun Rainey and ICE Officer Nicole Francis about a detained individual who was ordered release on a Tuesday, scheduling for ICE's ability to pick up on Wednesday, assuring ICE that, quote, "Pickup will be easy." The email then continues offline. Captain Rainey asks ICE to call her, so the conversation is continued off email. How do you explain this?
I assume it happened in 2017. It would not happen today.
How do you hold that to account? What are the practices right now?
The, the practices are what I said. Our only communication involves individuals with a qualifying offense. There's a terrorist list provision. We've never had anybody, in my knowledge, who satisfied it in recent years. So, all of our communication involves individuals with qualifying offenses. Consistent with city law, we tell ICE that the person with a qualifying offense is being released, and then we do nothing more. We do not hold that person. If ICE shows up, we turn that person over. But all communications with ICE today involve individuals with qualifying convictions.
Are there specific policy changes that you can point me and this council to that indicate that communication between Captain Deshaun or Rainey and DOC communication has changed?
I'm not sure the policy has changed, because I'm not sure whether that communication in 2017 was consistent with an old policy or not. I can share with you, however you want to do it, Councilwoman, our current policy, which would not permit that communication unless their individual had a qualifying offense.
Okay. Does DOC slow down or change the release process to facilitate ICE arrests?
No.
From another email dating to 2017 between Captain Rainey and an ICE officer, indicated by an email that a community member's release time is dependent on when ICE will arrive to make an arrest. It states, "Please advise me when your arrival time will be, so I may inform the facility and have the subject waiting for your arrival." I also have an email from September of that year where DOC affirmatively alerts ICE that a detained individual's attorney called and advised them to act fast in securing a warrant for the detained person. How do you explain this?
If it happened, it happened in 2017. It would not happen today. And the proof in many ways, as they say, is in the pudding. We had 109 detainers, and we released eight people last year, last fiscal year. So far this year, we have even more detainers, and we've released three people. It is not our practice to communicate with ICE unless the individual has a qualifying conviction, and then only to say he will be released on this date. If ICE shows up, we will turn him over. If they don't, we will not hold them.
Okay, that's reassuring. For Moya, does Moya monitor DOC communication with ICE?
What we do is, we don't monitor the conversation or interaction that's taking place between DOC and ICE. We don't have that type of role.
Could you elaborate on the role that you currently play?
What we do is, we engage in conversations with DOC, with NYPD and/or Department of Probations. We provide technical assistance. We make sure that we get a sense of what's going on in the case and ask specifically what ways we can support them in that process in making sure that the detainer laws are not violated.
Understood. We'll come back to Moya again, just to learn a little bit more about the Resputney case. Turning back to Paul, would you say that DOC has a culture of collusion and desire to facilitate the deportation of immigrant New Yorkers?
You will be surprised at my answer, but the answer is absolutely not.
I have an email from 2015 when DOC signed an email to ICE asking them to pick up someone with, with the hashtag #teamsendthemback, as well as one on March 2, 2018, in which DOC solicits a detainer from ICE with the subject line, "Urgent Missing Detainer." DOC claims that the court is awaiting for these documents, but ultimately, the detainer is located. DOC informs ICE that "You are my boo for real," and "boo for real" are all capitalized. How do you explain this?
Councilwoman, 2015 is even before 2017, right? I don't know what happened in 2015. If that happened, it was inappropriate. It would not happen today.
And then the "You are my boo for real" is from 2018.
It would not happen today.
What kind of disciplining happens in, in the team? For messages like this that are clearly failing to adhere to our detainer laws?
I, I don't know what happened in 2015 in terms of discipline. I do know what happened in 2019 in an incident, and the individual officer was disciplined. And I think you know Commissioner Malino well enough to know that if there was a failure to abide by this policy, if we, to use the expression, colluded with ICE, he would take strong disciplinary action.
Understood. I'd like to pass it to Councilmember Powers for some questions.
Thank you. Why wouldn't it happen today? It happened in 2018.
Well, I think the short answer is, four years later, new commissioner, new general counsel, and people learn lessons. 2019, we made a mistake. The officer was punished. The message was reinforced. I'm quite confident it would not happen today and is not happening.
Does the staffer still work at the Department of Corrections?
He was not terminated.
I think the questions then may, maybe are appropriate. I understand, and I'm grateful for your testimony, and I do hope that's the case. I don't think it's inappropriate to ask a question about a current employee who has a, it exists as evidence of something that you admit is a wrongdoing.
No, nor, nor do I, and I didn't mean to, to suggest that. I did mean to suggest that I am confident that the law as it exists is being followed. The person was suspended for a period of time. It was, as viewed at the time, not an intentional error. It's hard, whether it is our agency or, or your city council, to terminate people for mistakes, but he was punished.
Okay. I noticed in your testimony, and I listened to it, we have a bill, I have a bill, Intro 185, that impacts the Department of Corrections. I don't, do you have a, does an agency have a position, or the mayor's office have a position on that bill?
You, you have to help me.
Intro 185, I'll read you the...
It's the provision that basically eliminates the communication requirement. No, we don't have a position as such. Our position is simple. If the law changes, we'll follow it. There's, it is an issue of public policy, and that's your prerogative, not ours.
Okay. And Intro 184 NYPD, I know you guys said you have a no position, no, no, you have no position on that legislation. Is that fair to say?
That's fair to say. We, we haven't held anyone regards to that provision in some time, so...
Okay. And in 2018, there was a New York State appellate court decision, which I think changed the way that enforcement happens. And, and then I think subsequent Attorney General guidance around this. Do you, you're familiar with that?
Yeah, I think that it basically said that because it's a civil detainer, we're not permitted to hold them for 48 hours or beyond the time when we normally release them.
Right.
So, we've been complying with that.
And the legislation I have essentially, you know, I think codifies that at the city level. Is that fair to say?
I think that's fair to say.
Okay. I, I, this is not to pick on you guys, but it would be, I think, why is there no position? I feel like the mayor would, would support that if that's the legal standard of the state. And I'm, we often have agencies come here, and sometimes they hate my bills, and they tell me I don't like them. Sometimes they love them and they support them. It feels like I'm just confused why there's no position.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I, I agree with you that it is codifying what pretty much already exists. And for that reason, we're not opposing or supporting it. It's, I agree with you that it's codifying what the Court of Appeals has already said.
Okay. And I just want to ask, I have a minute and a half, actually. So, just to clarify, under any circumstances, or what circumstances, would the NYPD be permitted to detain a civil, a person for civil immigration purposes?
For civil only. I don't think we could, and we don't. You know, if there was a judicial warrant, which I don't believe, I mean, rarely if ever happens. You know, the contents of that warrant might change that, but for, based on an ICE detainer, I don't think we would.
Okay. And is there a reason why the same standard that applies to DOC's ability to detain individual federal immigration enforcement shouldn't apply to NYPD?
And what, what's that standard?
The DOC has a different standard, as I'm familiar with. Or am I, I guess the question is, it feels like the DOC's policy and the NYPD's policies are different from each other. Am I correct in asserting that?
I mean, I think there might be some difference. I think the law, you know, I think that circumstances, certainly since 2020, when the state passed the Check Our Courts Act, and we're operating mostly in the courtroom, so out of the abundance of courts, and we've sort of pulled back even more than we had been doing. But I don't, I'm not familiar enough with DOC's policies and, and 9131 to comment on what the differences and the, and the similarities are.
We'll send over any questions. Do you want to?
No, I just wanted to say this, Assemblyman, or Councilman.
I'm in, I'm down here today.
I apologize, or maybe demoted.
Yeah.
But we, and people knowing more than me have told, have now told me, we did change our policy in 2019 after that unfortunate incident to make clear it is what I've said today.
Okay. And just one last question. This is for both agencies. For NYPD, what is the penalty for violating? I know you've mentioned it, for DOC, you mentioned a suspension, but maybe a clearer understanding what the policy or the process is for violating this? And for PD, similar question?
I'm not, I don't know off the top of my head what it is. I can look at the discipline matrix if it's, may not be specifically, but, you know, there would be some penalty for violating our patrol guide procedures around this.
Oh, I, I think the answer to that just turns on the circumstances. And as a lawyer, I'd say it turns mostly on the mens rea. Was it intentional, as in the emails that have been read this morning? Was it an accident? And so, it would vary, but there always would be some sanction. We take the policy seriously.
Okay. But this seemed, this one seemed like more of an accident, it seemed like.
Oh, I, I agree.
And the last thing, Moya, to Moya, do you guys support 184 and 185?
Moya and the city as a whole are strongly committed to ensuring that all New Yorkers can thrive regardless of immigration status. We are reviewing the legislation and look forward to continuing discussions with the council on the procedures in place to prevent unnecessary cooperation with ICE.
Thank you for that. It doesn't sound like you guys have a position on the bill.
Yeah, that's our position.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Is Captain Rainey still in the DOC?
I think the answer to that is yes. But I'd have to check, but I think the answer to that is yes.
We know that she's still there and holding her captain position. Has there been any disciplining based off of these email exchanges?
I, I don't know. I mean, it... I mean, as I said, it well predates my time. I don't know if disciplinary action was taken against her. I do know the emails that you read are not our policy and should not have happened.
We agree. They should not have happened. And if there's still emails being sent back and forth that show the xenophobic culture of this department, it is really unfair to our immigrant community.
Yeah, but, but, look, I don't want to quarrel, but I think xenophobic culture is a statement that suggests it's ongoing. And I have no evidence of that. And respectfully, I don't think you have any evidence of that. We are trying very hard to abide by the law here, which limits our communications with ICE greatly, which prevents us from holding people for ICE to show up. So whatever happened in 2015, as general counsel, and more importantly, I can tell you this is Commissioner Malino's policy, it will not happen in 2022 or 2023.
We really hope so, because that hashtag #teamsendthemback doesn't send that message to immigrants. I'd like to now turn over to colleagues, Councilmember Krishnan.
Thank you so much, Chairs Hanif and Powers, for today's hearing. And I appreciate the testimony today. My first question, and thank you for your position. I just want to state upfront, you know, I understand, Counselor, that your position is that these practices are not happening now that they were in the past, they predated your tenure. I have to say, I find that, unnecessarily representations, but I find the fact that they're not happening, I find it to be not credible. Because what really these emails show in the FOIL request is a culture, a pattern and practice of ICE regularly cooperating, sorry, with DOC, regularly cooperating with ICE in contravention of the laws passed by this body. And so given that's the case, my first question is I'd like to know, has the, when was the last time, or has the Department of Corrections ever received a signed judicial warrant? And if so, when was the last time?
Not in the past five years.
Not in the past five years. But there have been transfers to ICE in the last five years, correct?
Indeed.
Okay. And in what circumstances were those typically?
The only circumstance was the existence of a qualifying offense, a violent or otherwise serious crime. We have notified ICE of the person's release, and if they're on time, the person is transferred to their custody.
And how do you document the length of the normal discharge process? If it's your testimony that if ICE is late, they don't wait, how do you all document the length of time of the normal discharge process?
Well, some of these matters involve individuals in our custody on bail, where they meet the bail that the court has required of them. And there, our rule is that the person should be released in three hours. Three hours is tight, and we don't always make it, but we try very hard. And so you do have a record in those cases of when the bail was paid and when the release was made. And I think 80% of them, we do within the three hours. The others will sometimes go slightly over. And in those cases, we release the person. We have a law that says, "release." The other individuals are sentenced prisoners, and there we tell ICE when the release process starts, and then the person's out the door. We're not holding on to him if ICE isn't there.
Going back to the larger question of, as I mentioned, the pattern and practice of DOC violating these laws of the city council in terms of prohibited communication with ICE, when did your representation, or when did your position as general counsel with the Department of Corrections start?
August.
August of this past year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe July, maybe July.
July, okay. Given the extensive, I mean, the record, the FOIL request is replete with communications. And I understand your testimony that that was in the past, but the fact of the matter is it is replete with cooperation, which raises serious questions about the agency's commitment to actually complying with the statute. And so given what we're seeing in those FOIL requests and the response, given statements like #teamsendthemback and all those kinds of things, when you come in, in your position in last year, what are the steps at that point the general counsel's office is taking as far as any corrective action, training, any ways to address this situation? Because given how systemic it is and the fact that some of the employees or many of them are still at DOC, it sounds like it's an ongoing issue.
Look, I don't want to quarrel. I mean, you have evidence from 2015, 2017, 2018. That's a while back.
It's also three years with evidence, 2015, 2017, 2018. So it's systemic.
But the, but the good thing about the city of New York is that agencies can learn and grow. And we have, and people have been trained on these policies. My lawyers in the legal division are involved whenever there is whatever purports to be a qualifying offense. Because oftentimes, it's not so easy to determine. The best example of that is if the qualifying offense is out of state. And there you oftentimes have to look at the elements to see if they match New York elements. So I can tell you that my lawyers are involved in these decisions. We are advising whether there is or isn't a qualifying offense. And we are doing everything we can to make sure that the communication is limited to what the law allows. And the best proof I can give you of that is just the numbers here.
But Counsel, sorry to cut you off, just to make sure. Chair, if you don't mind, I have a couple more questions. That's okay. Continue, please.
No, you're fine.
Any more testimony?
None on that topic.
So I do understand that point, but it is your testimony that despite the fact that these instances occurred in the past, they did occur over at least several years, as far as we know, it is your testimony that those instances revealed in the FOIL requests violated the law, that DOC violated the law in those instances, correct?
It's my testimony that if the law is what then was what it is now, those communications should not have occurred.
So knowing that, coming into your position in the general counsel, as general counsel for the agency, knowing that the agency has committed serious transgressions of the law in the past, and the recent past, it's not that long ago, what specifically, what corrective measures were taken? Were there any trainings done? Were there any policy amendments, new manuals issued? What corrective practices were taken to ensure no such violation ever happened again?
Our policies were changed in 2019 to ensure that they were consistent with the law. I'm confident the training was done, because training is always done when policies have changed. When I came in, I'm unaware of any problems. I'm unaware of any communications that have occurred. And as I said, I think you're unaware of any communications that have occurred in my, in my tenure or before. And so I don't take corrective action when I'm not aware that anything is happening that violates the law. We are being very careful. As I said, my lawyers are involved in each of these, and the numbers support that just because you lodge a detainer doesn't mean you get an individual. When your numbers are more than 100 detainers and you're releasing eight people, that should be proof that we're taking our legal obligations quite seriously.
But are there any ongoing trainings to ensure compliance with these legal obligations? Just as you have regular trainings in any place of work, on the civil rights laws or anything else, are there ongoing trainings, given what's happened in the past, to ensure there's no future violations of this law?
I'm not aware of ongoing trainings.
Thank you. My next question is, you do stipulate that the employees that were involved in these communications in the past at DOC are still employees at DOC.
I don't know that, sir. I mean, they may be, they may not be. I can get back to you on that. I think some of them are, but I don't know.
What was Captain Rainey's position as far as the, or did she have any training responsibilities in her role at DOC at the time that this was all happening?
I don't know.
And so do you have any sense of those who, like Captain Rainey and others who are in all likelihood still at DOC? Isn't it a concern of yours too that they may have trained other officers as well on these kinds of practices that violate the law?
What I care about is that we train people on what is the law. We change our policies. And as I sit here today, I am aware of no instance in the last two years in which we communicated with ICE inappropriately.
It seems to me that given the serious transgressions before, given that the employees have continued in the agency and the likelihood that other employees have also received trainings from them too, it is of grave concern that there are not ongoing trainings right now as to ensure compliance with the law. If in the past what's happened, the fact that a future transgression may happen again too, seems like a realistic possibility. So it is of deep concern that there is an ongoing training, just as a general matter, as a preemptive matter, to ensure compliance with this law.
I hear you. I would just say the following. This law is easy to comply with. You simply say, "If it's not a qualifying offense, do not talk to ICE." Right? That doesn't require daily training. And our people know, "If it's not a qualifying offense, do not talk to ICE," and that is our policy.
Understood. And I hear that. As a lawyer myself too, I know the laws are only as good as they are enforced in reality. And my concern would be that the laws on the books may be there, but if the agency and the staff are not actually being trained on them, there's a serious question that could be violated in the future. But thank you. No further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Krishnan. Do any of my other colleagues have follow-ups? Councilmember Narcisse?
Good morning. How long you had the job?
Since July or August.
All right.
Not that long.
You kind of, kind of new to it, right?
I am kind of new to it.
All right. But there's a lot of "I don't know" in the answers that we cannot get commitment. So my thing is, I can understand you new to the job, but when you go back, can you make a commitment for those training that we're talking about? That, because after all, New York City is a city of immigrants. Am I correct? We, you're just saying, because I'm an immigrant myself. I was born in Haiti.
You couldn't, you couldn't be more correct.
All right. So that's give me some hope, because I am a person with faith. Like, New York City is a great city, and we're going to do our very best to make sure everyone that step in the city that feel welcome and treated fairly and knows they're right. And we're going to have to keep on doing that, because that's what make us, if anything, that the great city of immigrants, right?
Counselwoman, I don't think you've had that many "I don't knows" from me.
Oh, no. And referred to Shaker's question about the training, I realize there was a lot of "I don't know."
I promise you both this. I will go back and I will reinforce with the unit in charge here what the rules are. I have no sense whatsoever that they're violating them, none. But I will make clear to people that two distinguished members of this committee wanted me to reinforce it, and I will.
And I believe that, because we have faith here, because we hoping when we put a law in place that it follows, because this is a immigrant city. How often does the Department of Probation receive detainer requests?
I can give you the exact number. I'm sorry. Oh, for probation?
Yeah. Department of Probation.
I'm happy not to answer that question.
All right.
The department has received zero detainer requests, and there is zero cooperation in that regard.
Thank you. What is the internal process for how DOP handles a detainer request?
Is that for probation?
Department of Probation.
Okay.
DOP.
So not only detainer requests, but any communications from ICE is directed to the Office of General Counsel for my personal attention.
Thank you. Both NYPD and DOC have previously posted detainer reports available online from as far back as 2013, from, I mean, for NYPD and 2017 for DOC. Why does DOP only post the most recent detainer report online?
As far as I am aware, our numbers have always been zero. And so if you're saying that prior reports were not there, I will go back and look into that.
Thank you. You commit to report, to post all of them online, right?
When it's zero, yeah.
All right. Even the zero, we want to know the zero. When an immigrant is called to appear at DOP, when ICE officers are present, who is making that call, DOP or ICE?
To my knowledge, there are no ICE officials present at DOP when our clients come to see their probation officers.
Thank you. Will you commit to reporting on the exchange of information regardless of who initiated the exchange rather than as a response to federal authority requests? Do you like every single exchange between the two agencies?
We keep records of the detainer requests, which, as I've stated before, are zero.
I love this.
In terms of every single interaction, the answer to that is no.
Thank you. Who is DOP exchanging info with ICE?
We are not exchanging any information with ICE.
You probably say, "I'm persistent and consistent," right? Who initiates information exchange between DOP and ICE? Is that documented, tracked?
No one initiates that exchange. And as I've said, any inquiries coming from ICE of any nature are directed to the Office of General Counsel.
One last question, Chair. Is that okay? Under that consensus, would DOP affirmatively reach out to federal immigration authorities?
The answer to that is no.
I appreciate your time. Thank you so much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much. For the DOC, can we get a copy of the change or updated policy that you had referred to from 2019?
I'm never sure what our policy is with sharing with counsel, but I'll go back, and if it's consistent with our policy, no reason you shouldn't have it.
Could you elaborate about what that means? You can't share with us the policy that exists.
I know there are other policies we haven't shared with counsel because of security reasons. I don't know if this is a policy we can share, but it may well be. And so if you'll give me an opportunity to check, I'm happy to do so.
That would be great. We'd really appreciate that. And the testimony we heard from the Neighborhood Defender Services involves a case where DOC detainer law violation occurred in 2022.
No. Can I speak to that?
Go for it.
So here's, here's what I know. That individual was presented to us in the courthouse. And I believe I'm right in saying the courthouse in Manhattan. And presented to us to take him into custody. We didn't, because there was no securing order. In other words, there was no order saying he had bailed a post and hadn't posted it. And so we simply said to the NYPD, "We can't take him." At that point, he went back. And I do think, I don't live in a world where one should assign blame, but I do think the District Attorney's Office has said publicly that they made a mistake involving ICE and bringing ICE in and taking him into ICE custody. But we had no role in that incident whatsoever other than to say, "We can't take him into our custody because there is no bail that we're aware of that has been set." After that, what occurred seems to be self-help on the part of the District Attorney's Office and self-help that I think the District Attorney has said shouldn't have happened. I will tell you this, Counselwoman. It's created a problem, because that person was then ridded back out of immigration custody to face the charges in Supreme Court. He is now in, he is now in our custody. Because he was brought into us as what is called a borrowed individual, we borrowed him from federal custody, we're going to have a great deal of trouble not giving him back to ICE, right? Because they brought him to us him to us in response to a writ. And so we would be thrilled if the District Attorney's Office and other agencies found a way to get him so that he doesn't go back into ICE custody, where he wouldn't have been but for communications that seemed to be wrongful.
Thank you. I'd like to turn to Moya for a few questions. Could you share the role that Moya plays in the implementation of our city's detainer laws?
Yes, of course. We serve in two different capacities. First and foremost, as a consultant/ advisor. However, you know, there's no specific role under the city detainer law for Moya. We do have a charter mandate that requires us to play an advisory role on questions related to implementation of these laws. In general, we support agencies whose expertise is not on immigration issues, and we also serve as a trusted liaison to the community at large. Moya works hard to build bridges between immigrant communities and city government. When advocates have concerns about detainer laws implementation and bring them to Moya, we elevate to the appropriate agencies, facilitate dialogue between the city and the provider, advocate, or constituent, and we provide agencies with technical assistance on immigration questions.
Could you elaborate on what kind of consulting or what those meetings look like? Is that like a quarterly meeting that is happening? Is that bi-weekly conversations? What's the advisory role here?
Well, we always, I mean, we have different stakeholders that reach out to us.
Well, specifically with the DOC?
With the DOC.
And NYPD and DOP?
Yes. In terms of DOC, NYPD, and Department of Probation, our objective is to focus on the issues that are being raised at the time that they're being raised. I mean, there's no set timeframe. It's just when these issues arise, then we engage with DOC, DOP, and/or NYPD.
So outside of an issue or a case, you're not necessarily meeting with DOC, DOP, NYPD?
That's correct.
There's no consulting that's happening on a regular basis?
No consulting unless on a case-by-case basis.
Could you talk about any investigation that Moya has conducted into the September 15, 2022 handover by NYPD and investigators from the Manhattan DA's office of the case we've been hearing about, Mr. Alexei Rasputny, to ICE custody at Manhattan Criminal Court? Is that an incident of a case that would now require you all to begin some consulting and advising?
Moya first learned about this situation on September 29 from the constituent's attorney. His attorney followed up with additional information on October 5. We responded in more of a liaison role. Moya immediately elevated the issue to the Law Department, MoJ, DOC, the Manhattan DA's office, and NYPD. Moya has met with these agencies to understand what happened and discuss requests made by the attorney to support their client.
I just want to be clear: He was never in NYPD custody, and we never received the detainer. I think, as Paul mentioned, probably the Manhattan DA's office is the best place to talk about the whole incident, but he was never in our custody.
Understood. Just wanted to get some clarity on what the investigation is looking like in Moya's court right now.
And again, Moya doesn't do investigations. I mean, that falls on, you know, DOC and the law enforcement entities. What we do is we provide support. We have communications. We engage in finding out what happened in ways that we try to support the person that's being brought up on charges.
So are you working with Mr. Rasputny or anyone in his orbit right now?
The extent of our--
Help him, or what is that looking like?
The extent of our engagement is more so with his attorney.
And so are you in touch with the attorney, or who in Moya is the one working on this case?
Moya is engaged with NDS, having conversations with them.
And have you conducted any interviews with the NYPD regarding this incident, and then any interviews with the Manhattan DA's office regarding this incident? I'm just trying to understand the channel of communication per case that comes up to Moya.
Well, I mean, we just engage in fact-finding on our end and then look at ways that we can support, in whatever ways that we can as it relates to that particular case.
So the fact-finding right now doesn't include conversations with NYPD, Manhattan DA's office, the agencies?
Sorry. I mean, I think we've all been in conversations about what happened and trying to figure it out and maybe, you know, I understand this was sort of an abnormal and confusing thing that didn't follow the normal protocols. But I know I've been on phone calls with Moya and Danny to try to figure it out. I think ultimately, it's Manhattan DA's office's case, and they're the best place to talk about overall. But certainly, you know, in my experience, when issues are raised to Moya, Moya's attorneys will come to me or other people in NYPD to sort of raise them and figure out if this is a one-off incident, if there's something that we need to fix. You know, I know right now we're working with Moya, or we're going to be working with Moya to develop a training around sort of various topics and laws related to our interactions with immigrant communities. So, you know, those are ways that we sort of collaborate.
So for this particular case regarding Mr. Rasputny, you're working on some trainings, you mentioned?
No, not on this case. Just in general, it's something, you know, every now and again, we look and make sure we're up to date on what we've done, make sure we've alerted our officers on the rules. So not based on this case, based on, I mean, I guess, the conversations that were inspired by this case, but, you know, that's just a way of collaboration. Sometimes these discussions come in to, is there ways we can improve, right? So one thing we thought, maybe it's just time to update training after these conversations.
Meaning the conversations about Mr. Rasputny's case?
Right, right.
Okay. So what kinds of trainings are you all thinking about developing or community conversations?
So right now, we're working on probably, you know, something to work with our Criminal Justice Bureau specifically, and then maybe an NYPDU video that we can send out to everyone. But that's still, we're in the early process of trying to figure that out.
And what role does Moya play in that?
I mean, we consult. I mean, we try to engage with, whether it's DOP, DOC, and NYPD in terms of the content that's being shared out. And we also engage with our different legal providers that can also help to frame and shape the content that's going to be disseminated ultimately to the public.
So is Moya working on any recourse to support Mr. Rasputny or engage with the community to better understand what justice for him looks like?
You know, we have to defer, first and foremost, obviously, to the District Attorney's Office. We don't know the extent of their process in that matter. So right now, you know, we're available to support, but we can't take the lead in that process.
I see. Okay. So in 2021, when the city's detainer laws were violated against Javier Castillo Maradiaga, the New York City Law Department provided a letter acknowledging the violations that occurred. Will a similar letter be supplied for Mr. Rasputny?
We'll take that back, and we'll circle back with you to have a response for that.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand the role captured by Moya as it comes to the detainer laws and how exactly you're administering. I mean, it sounds like there is no oversight role that Moya plays outside of an advisory role that is sounding a little vague from the responses. But if you can provide anything tangible in like what particular cases have yielded, and especially with Mr. Rasputny's case, we will be really keeping our eyes peeled on what comes out of Moya, if anything. But we also want to see Moya be a partner in the fight for immigrant justice, which you all, of course, prioritize and play the role of.
Yes. I mean, again, you know, we're serving in the capacity of consultants as mandated by the charter and as a trusted liaison. And our objective is, this already has been elevated in terms of, you know, engaging all the appropriate agencies. But the bottom line is, we want to facilitate that dialogue, engage with the different entities that are involved in this process, and provide the technical assistance that we can provide as it relates to these immigrant-related issues.
Does this mayoral administration take a different position on affirmatively supporting immigrant New Yorkers and defending the city's sanctuary laws than the last administration?
I mean, our administration is committed to supporting immigrant New Yorkers throughout this process and making sure that, you know, their rights are not violated as a result of the detainer laws. So that's our position.
Thank you. Councilmember Joseph?
Thank you, Chair. So one of the good things I'm hearing out of this conversation is that each and every one of your agencies is taking responsibility for dropping the ball. Is that correct?
It depends when the question is, when did we drop it?
Oh, when the gentleman wound up in ICE?
Oh, not, no, we have no responsibility in that. We don't. I mean, the person was not in our custody, and we didn't communicate with ICE. So this one, I'm happy to say, is not on us.
Okay, good. It's not on you, okay. NYPD suggested that there would be training. Why hasn't taken so long to start training?
I mean, I'm not saying that we haven't ever had training. I'm saying we're doing a refresher training. I don't know what the training was in the past, but this is a refresher training. I know we've put out notices. We have a patrol guide procedure on, you know, these laws. When people, in terms of the detainer laws, all the detainees come through our Criminal Justice Bureau, which is responsible for central booking. Officers are instructed and informed of their obligations when they join that unit. But this is more of a refresher training to go make sure everyone's, you know--
On the same page?
Right.
Pretty much?
Yeah.
So when someone is being released from the criminal court after a conviction, right, who runs the warrant check?
So I guess maybe it'd be helpful to explain a little bit how the process works for NYPD. So the way it all starts off is when we have an arrest, we fingerprint people. It is fingerprinted through, we have mandatory fingerprinting on the criminal procedure law for felonies and penal misdemeanors and a few other, you know, for instance, if it's a violation that could be bumped up to a misdemeanor if there's a second conviction, that'd be something we'd fingerprint on. Goes to DCGS, which is the state board that handles fingerprints, and then goes to the federal government. The federal government would then determine whether they want to lodge a detainer. If they did, and just, you know, individuals are only in our custody for 24 hours. If they do it in time, it'll come to us, in which case our individuals in the CJB would do a review of the rap sheet and look at the warrant. Again, you know, in the last two or, in the last few reporting periods, we've honored zero of them and facilitated no transfers to ICE. If a person after arraignment goes to DOC custody, we would send the detainer along with them. If they're released, then it stays with us.
But DOC determine whether they'll notify the transfer to ICE or no? Yes or no? Yes, sir.
We'll, how are you?
I'm good.
We'll only notify ICE if there is a qualifying conviction, and that we do do. And again, you see it in the numbers.
Yes. Where are people generally held in a holding cell, courthouse, or elsewhere? Where do you normally hold them until they're transferred, picked up, however you want to call it?
Our policy is not to notify ICE in the courthouse. So none of our employees at the courthouse are empowered to call ICE. And that, I think, is consistent with city law about not having ICE come to courthouses. So in my remarks, what I said is, one of the conditions is that the person be on Rikers Island. And if the person isn't on Rikers Island or on the boat, as people call it, we won't notify ICE.
Do you communicate with OCA personnel about individuals for whom detainers are honored or ICE is notified? At one point, is OCA notified?
So I think OCA would know when the person comes to arraignment, whether an ICE detainer has been lodged.
Okay. What is considered a violation of the detainer's law?
I think the answer to that is any communication that isn't exempt under the law, that being communication involving qualifying individuals and terrorist matches and use of state resources, city resources to assist ICE. I think if we held somebody beyond the time authorized by law, that would be a violation of that law as well. So that's why our policy is shaped the way it is.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I'd like to follow up with DOP about where someone is called into DOP and they happen to be taken in by ICE. How often does that happen, and how is that tracked?
I actually did an inquiry specifically for this hearing over the last few years, and we have no incidents of that hearing.
What kind of an inquiry was that?
With or without. So if someone, for example, I can say there's no one who's been taken into custody from ICE on any DOP premises. If ICE was operating out of a courthouse, we might, the probation officer might know of it. I've checked that, and the response to that over the past number of years has also been negative.
I see. And how would any conversations between DOP and ICE be logged?
Any and all conversations with ICE, any inquiries that come from ICE are automatically referred to the Office of General Counsel. If it involves a detainer request for a law, we would log that. As I've stated before, we receive zero detainer requests.
Thank you. Those are all my questions.
We thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will be calling public panels next, but we'll give the administration a few moments. Thank you. We will now call for public testimony, for public witnesses. Once your name is called, if you are joining us by Zoom, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the sergeant at arms will give you the go-ahead to begin after setting the timer. So please listen for that cue. For fairness of all testifying today, all public testimony will be limited to two minutes per person. When the sergeant announces that your two minutes are up, we ask that you please wrap up testimony so we can move on to the next person. As I mentioned, we do have a hard stop at 1:00 p.m. For those of you who are here in person, once your name is called, you can come up to the table and give your testimony once everyone has settled. testimony once everyone has settled. If you have not already registered to testify and you are present in person today, please speak with sergeant-at-arms and make sure to fill out a witness slip. I will now call the first panel. We have Janay Cotton, Alex Zucker, Cheryl Andrade, and Ravi Ragbir.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Janay Cotton. I'm the executive director of Families for Freedom Organization, which is an immigrants' rights organization based in New York City. I'm also a child of an immigrant. So I'm going to share briefly with you a personal story of mine. My former spouse, Jean Montraville, he, I met him back in 2003. He was on parole for a drug offense that he committed at the age of 19. In 2005, he received a letter in the mail from Department of Probation stating that they were, they were going to release him early for good behavior. It turned out to be an ICE sweep. He was deported back to Haiti in 2018. Fortunately, we were able to get them back. But as I sat here with the previous panel, and I hear them say, oh, a mistake. A mistake has changed and damaged a lot of people's lives, and it must stop. I'm going to share with you another story of a mistake of a client that, that's with Families for Freedom. His name is Wayne Gardine. He served 29 years in the state penitentiary for a crime he didn't commit, only for the detective who was working in the 30th precinct in the Bronx, which was formerly known as the Dirty Thirty because they targeted black and brown people back in the days. Wayne was looking forward to being released from jail in April of '22, only to be met with ICE. I'm going to read to you a letter from the Legal Aid Society. The Legal Aid Society Wrongful Conviction Unit is currently representing Wayne Gardine, a 48-year-old Jamaican-American man who was unjustly incarcerated for 28 years for a 1994 shooting that he did not commit. Now the detective has recanted his story, and we still have to wait patiently to see when he's going to be released from a detention center. I tried to get his mom to come speak, but she is heartbroken because she's been living without her one and only son for nearly three decades for a crime that they did not commit. New York City is a melting pot, and immigrants should be welcome here. And the Police Department, the Correction Department, Department of Parole, Department of Probation should not be sharing information. Because at the end of the day, when you are immigrant in New York, you don't have a right to attorney like citizens do. And detention centers are a horrible place, and it's very inhumane. We currently service members of the immigrant, immigrant community that's scared to report crime that's happening to them in New York City because they don't want ICE to be reported. I've heard with my own two ears recently when I was in the Bronx, it was some kids play fighting in the street. They were of Hispanic descent. And NYPD officer quote, and I'm going to quote his exact words, "If y'all don't cut it out, I'm going to send you back to your country. This is unright, and this is unjust. And I'm happy I have the chance to testify. And I'm happy that you introduced these bills because we need to pass something." New York City is a sanctuary city. Everyone should be welcome here. I just testified at a press conference a couple of weeks ago. My former job before I started running Families for Freedom was with New York City Department of Homeless Services. New York City Department of Homeless Services had rules for citizens, and they had rules for the immigrant community. I remember about pre-pandemic, 2018, when I was working at Auburn Homeless Shelter, someone committed suicide, which was a citizen. That room was quickly put offline. But in December, one of the migrants that were transported here from Texas, he killed himself due to stress or whatever. He just couldn't take it. And his family was forced to sleep in the same room that he killed himself in. This is inhumane treatment, and it must stop. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Ravi Ragbir. I'm the executive director of the New Sanctuary Coalition. We work with people who are facing deportation, and many of them have criminal convictions, which we can, which you have heard about, similar stories of them being taken away from DOC and in their interaction with NYPD. But I also wanted to, I actually will talk about my own case, where in January 2018, when they, when ICE shackled me to take me away, the NYPD was very closely working with them, including when I went to the hospital, the, the officers came in full riot gear with guns. And their label was Joint Terrorism Task Force. And it was very bizarre that the Terrorism Task Force would be involved in that. I don't know if I'm a terrorist. I know I am a dangerous person to ICE because I speak up against them. But that doesn't mean that there should be this outland, outrageous response or working with, with, with ICE. I also wanted to speak to some of the questions that councilwoman, now, since I had our medical, being in immigration myself, detained in immigration myself, there is little or no medical access. And if someone is suffering from, from mental trauma, or they have medication that were issued from the doctors on the outside, the jails and the detention centers do not give anything like that. If you have any, any mental, if you have any depressive nature, they would probably give you the, what do you call those things with the, with the antihistamines? They would give them those things that would put them to sleep, but not actually treating the problem itself. I'll stop here, but there's a lot of stories I can tell you. If you need to, you can reach out to me for more stories about the inhumanities, but also the interaction between ICE and NYPD and DOC. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to Alex Zucker, followed by Cheryl Andrade, and then Lena Graber. All three of these witnesses are on Zoom. Alex, you can go ahead when the sergeant calls time.
Starting time.
Thank you. Thank you to the committees on immigration and on criminal justice for holding this public hearing to address the New York City Detainer Laws. My name is Alex Zucker. I'm the child of an immigrant and a member of the New York City Chapter of Showing Up for Racial Justice, SURGE for short. I'm testifying in support of Intros 184 and 185, and in support of passing Intro 158. Thank you, councilmembers, Hanif and Powers for introducing these bills. SURGE is a national organization created to move white people into action as part of the multiracial movement for justice and liberation for all. The system of white supremacy harms everyone, including white people, in very different ways than it harms people of color and black people in particular. On the bills you're considering today, just a few words, Intro 158, we support the city council adopting this bill, maintaining this bill, or sorry, adopting this bill for a private right of action by people harmed by the city's actions due to violations of the detainer law, so that they and their families can be justly compensated. NYPD, DOC, and ICE are institutions created to uphold white supremacy. The violence they commit is not because they are quote-unquote "broken" or quote-unquote "failing," but it is in their nature. It is what they are designed to do. On Intro 184, we support the requirement of a judicial warrant in every case where DOC or NYPD wishes to communicate with ICE. The current law allows for abuse by ICE, which has repeatedly shown itself to be a bad-faith actor, showing immigrants administrative warrants and pretending they are judicial. On Intro 185, we strongly support eliminating the criminal carve-outs that allow DOC and NYPD to transfer people into federal custody based on their so-called criminal history or matches on a government watch list.
Time expired.
Given the white supremacist nature of the policing jails and surveillance that make up the prison industrial complex, black and brown people, including immigrants, are disproportionately policed in this city, and therefore more likely to have contact with the criminal legal system. Policing, whether by NYPD or ICE, is a system of social control. It does not provide public safety, and is not meant to. It is time for the city to end its complicity in this practice. You've already heard about the abuses committed by ICE, the NYPD, and DOC, and I'm sure you will hear more today. SURGE NYC has been part of the organizing to end these abuses.
Thank you.
We urge the city council to do the right thing by adopting all three of the bills the committees are considering today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Alex.
Cheryl Andrade is next. You can go ahead when the sergeants call time.
Starting time.
Thank you, council, for holding this important meeting today. My name is Cheryl Andrade, and I am an immigration attorney at the Legal Aid Society. In my role, I collaborate with other public defenders to minimize the immigration consequences to our noncitizen clients. In 2018, Legal Aid represented a mentally ill green card holder who I'll refer to as Mr. S. Mr. S. had prior misdemeanor convictions that made him deportable, and a felony conviction, which notably itself was not a deportable offense, but which happens to fall within the 177 carve-out. Our public defenders negotiated a plea in mental health court that preserved his ability to remain in the United States if he ended up in removal proceedings. But once he pled guilty, Mr. S. was returned to Rikers ostensibly for mental health discharge planning. But once there, he was turned over to ICE, even though ICE never showed DOC a warrant from a federal judge. DOC justified the transfer under the communication loophole of the detainer law. In this example, DOC's coordination went beyond communication. They informed ICE of the date and time of the release. They allowed ICE on Rikers to make the arrests for a civil immigration law violation. They oversaw the transfer to ICE, and they recorded the transfer on the public DOC website. DOC's justification was that as a public safety policy, they had to ensure a so-called orderly transfer to ICE when someone has a conviction under the 177 carve-out. So Mr. S.'s example here is just one example of continued abuse and deliberate misinterpretation of the detainer law. This example highlights three key points. First, that noncitizens are still handed over to ICE. Second, that DOC still abuses the communication loophole to evade the detainer law. And lastly, that the 177 crime carve-out has been used to subvert the detainer law. Today's bills don't eliminate the 177 carve-out, but we respectfully urge the council to include amendments that would abolish the carve-out altogether and ensure that all New Yorkers are afforded equal protection. If New York is truly a sanctuary city, this council must amend the detainer law to prohibit DOC and NYPD from abusing the communication loophole and to provide a private right of action for those harmed by detainer law violations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The last witness on this panel will be Lena Graber. Lena, you can go ahead when the sergeants call time.
Starting time.
Hello, thank you. My name is Lena Graber, and I'm senior staff attorney at the Immigrant Legal Resource Center. I'm a national expert on immigration enforcement and how local law enforcement agencies work with ICE. For more than a decade, the ILRC has tracked local policies that promote immigrant rights and restrict local agencies from participating in immigration enforcement. New York City, like many places across the country, passed key legislation in 2014 to stop unlawfully imprisoning people on ICE detainees. But the current policy, as was just alluded to, and leaving aside any violations that take place, nonetheless still allows for the continued involvement of Department of Corrections in facilitating immigration arrests, leading to the indefinite detention and deportation, and the many other horrors attested to by those who spoke before me. Other comparable jurisdictions across the country, covering populous cities like Chicago, Los Angeles, Washington DC, Seattle, San Jose, and Philadelphia, as well as many other localities across the country, have enacted local policies that fully prohibit all such participation in the deportation of their own residents. It is frankly shocking that New York City, a global symbol of immigration, continues to lack a strong policy that protects all of its immigrant residents from deportation by their own public servants. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, do you have any questions?
I do have a question for Ravi, if you could come back. Could you remind us what year you were arrested or detained? And you said that the officers that showed up were from the Joint Terrorism Task Force?
Correct. This was in 2018, January 11, 2018. And there, there were at least half a dozen of JTF officers present in the courtroom, sorry, in the, in the hospital, as they were waiting to take me away.
And then could you describe the work of the New Sanctuary Coalition? Who are the members? What kind of work you are engaging in right now?
New Sanctuary Coalition believes no one should be deported because the law itself is racist and dehumanizing. Our membership includes everyone, which is strange to say. But we, for people who need help, they can come to us. And when you say those who need help, we are speaking of immigrants who don't have access to any legal resources, or don't have, or need information, who just needs walking with them. So we had an accompaniment program where we would accompany them to their court, would accompany them to any interaction with immigration officers, so that the officers themselves, and the court itself, would learn to treat our immigrant community with respect and dignity. And this happened, and in fact, we were doing 100 accompaniments a week, which meant we had about 500 citizens who accompanied people. So the other group we are speaking of is, so apart from the people who need help, we also organize people who can help, citizens from various levels, including, we are talking about lawyers, we work with elected officials, we especially work with faith communities, where we were able to create sanctuary spaces. And in fact, we had four sanctuary, four members who took sanctuary in the former administration because they were being targeted by immigration and customs enforcement. In fact, many, in the early days of that administration, they were telling people to walk with their tickets and their passports, which was so wrong. So that's one of the ways we found out that people were going to be targeted and taken away, and they took sanctuary in a few of our churches in New York City.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I have one more question. That, this happened in 2018. Would the, would the law, the new legislation that you created, were to hold the, to be able to sue the city? Would I be able to, be able to, to access that? Is it attractive, and I should? Go ahead.
I'll have to double-check, but my understanding is that you should be able to.
Great. You owe me a lot. I'm sorry.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next panel we have up is Isav Alonso, Teri Lawson, and Rosa Cohen-Cruz.
Good afternoon. My name is Rosa Cohen-Cruz, and I'm the Director of Immigration Policy at the Bronx Defenders. I would like to thank the New York City Council and Councilmember Hanif for holding this important hearing, so we may hopefully hold the NYPD, DOC, and DOP accountable to the countless harms to immigrant New Yorkers, and prevent them from perpetuating those harms in the future. I'm testifying in favor of Intros 184, 185, and 158, although I do want to say that the Bronx Defenders supports a clear, concise version of Intros 184 and 185 that is equally applicable to all, regardless of criminal legal system contact. There should be no criminal carve-outs to this law. We've already seen what happens when city council draws lines around which immigrants are deserving of full protections. Not only do these agencies use it as an excuse to violate the law for those outside the full protections of the detainees, but the city then uses these lines to deny critical legal services, including access to representation to immigrant New Yorkers. The best version of this bill is one that is equally applicable to all immigrants, full stop. We urge city council to adopt amendments that eliminate the criminal carve-out. Intros 184 and 185 are crucially important to making sure DOC and NYPD can no longer twist the language of the detainer law and circumvent their intent. We know that this, the behavior that we heard about from the emails is ongoing. In 2021, In 2021, we testified about recent examples from that same year where ICE has seemingly known the minute someone takes a plea to a conviction for one of the 177 qualifying offenses, where ICE has delayed people without account, delayed release without accounting for the extra time for, until they, when they should have been at liberty. And we, and DOC testified then and now that they have, that ICE has never proffered a judicial warrant when they have transferred custody. The simplest read of the testimony we heard of the Department of Corrections is what advocates have long believed, that DOC continues to knowingly violate the intent of the detainer laws and has in fact been illegally communicating with ICE, detaining people past their release dates, and facilitating arrests in the community in actual violation of the laws. It happened in 2015. It happened in 2017. We know it's still happening today. So we urge passage of 184 and 185, and it's also crucially important to have a private right of action that holds the city accountable, that makes sure that there's some transparency, and that gives us access to documents. The reason we don't have anything since 2017 is because FOIL requests take a really long time. They take years to process. If we had more recent access to the city, they would have to be more careful in not violating their own laws into their documents. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, or good afternoon. My name is Teri Lawson. I'm the Executive Director of Unlocal, Community-Centered Nonprofit. Thank you to the, to the City Council, to Chair Hanif, to the Committee on Immigration and Committee on Criminal Justice for holding this important hearing and for, for all that you're doing to support Intros 158, 184, and 185. Unlocal represents individuals who have been turned over by NYPD and DOC in violation of our detainer laws, upending the lives of immigrant New Yorkers and their families. As an organization, we are committed to ending the deportation pipeline and fighting to stop this city from colluding with ICE and harming families. It has been two years since we appeared before this Council to urge the city to close the loopholes in our detainer laws, two years of testifying before this Council, two years of working behind the scenes to draft and redraft legislation with our partners at IDP, Bronx Defenders, NYCLU, and the ICE out of Courts, uh, sorry, ICE out of NYC Coalition, two years of rallies and press conferences, two years of waiting for action. We know the limitations of the law, that it so often fails to put right what has gone horribly wrong, that so rarely can we change the law to make a significant difference in people's lives. We are here to tell you that you can make this change, and it will have an immediate impact on families like Alma's, Daniel's, Alexis's, and Ravi's. Intro 184 and 185 closed the loopholes through which DOC and NYPD had been and continue to collude with ICE in violation of the letter and spirit of the detainer laws passed by this Council in 2014, despite the administration's statements to the contrary today. Collusion, which is openly on display in the emails shared today, made explicit during DOC's previous testimony before this Council in 2021, and has been revealed today in testimony by Alma, Daniel, and the New York Defender Services. We heard the administration ask us to trust them, and we simply cannot. We need legislative change. Intro 158 will create, will finally create a private right of action so that when those laws are violated, there will be redress for the families who suffer outrageous consequences, as Alma and Daniel have so powerfully testified. We urge you to make right what New York City has gotten so wrong in its treatment of immigrant families for far too long. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will call Yasmin Farhang, Sophia Gurele, Tanya, Taina Wagnak, and Zachary Ahmed. And apologize if I killed anyone's name.
Good morning. My name is Yasmin Farhang, and I'm the Director of Advocacy with the Immigrant Defense Project. Thank you so much to Chair Hanif for your leadership in this work and in this hearing, and thank you to the Committees on Immigration and Criminal Justice for holding this hearing. I do want to take a minute to note how unfortunate it is that the representatives from DOC and the rest of the panel are no longer here with us to hear this testimony. We are here to strongly condemn the city's years of intentionally flouting our key detainer laws and in support of the three key bills before the Council today. But I want to take a step back for a moment, back to the oversight hearing in 2021. It was not that long ago, where many of the same advocates and community members appeared to testify before the Council. We heard multiple statements from DOC officials denying collusion with ICE at that time. DOC Chief of Security Kenneth Stukes stated at that time, quote, "It is not DOC policy to retain individuals due to immigration detainees beyond their time authorized." DOC Deputy Commissioner Heidi Grossman, who was here earlier today and has left, stated at the time, quote, "Someone should generally be released within three hours of notice of bail paid." Stukes later said, quote, "We don't comply with the detainer in the sense that we detain the person. If they show up, they show up." And later, quote, "We're not holding someone solely to transfer that person to ICE. That's not our policy." At that same hearing, we heard voluminous testimony directly in contradiction to all of those claims, showing clear facilitation, delay, and slowdown of release by DOC for the purpose of ensuring that they would be detained by ICE. Yet DOC refused to acknowledge the reality we've all known on the ground. Today, there can be no more doubt of the troubling relationship between DOC and ICE based on some of the correspondence, and there is more, and more will be shared, between the DOC and ICE. I would like to just address this concern that it has been years since those emails. It hasn't been years since we've heard these experiences. Many, many more troubling examples were shared at this hearing in 2021. This FOIL was filed together by the Immigrant Defense Project and the Black Alliance for Just Immigration, and it shows routine illegal communication, and really, quite frankly, not just a willingness, but a desire to facilitate deportation. Captain Rainey, who continues to be in her position today in case there was any lack of clarity, perhaps made it most clear, referring to DOC and ICE as a team in her email, and I think it bears repeating, which she signed with the hashtag #TeamSendThemBack. It has been over eight years since passage of local laws limiting the city from working as an extension of ICE, and our city has fallen short, behind the national trend, as we heard from Lena Graber earlier as well. This administration simply cannot say out of one side of the mouth that this is a welcoming city for immigrant New Yorkers, and yet, through the other side of the mouth, speak with ICE to funnel people into their custody. The time is now for New York City to step up as a leader and send a clear message that ICE, to ICE, that our city will not be a pipeline to detention and deportation. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Sophia Gurele, and I'm an immigration attorney at the Bronx Defenders. Thank you to the committees for this public space to speak about this important issue. New York City needs to tighten its 2014 detainer laws, which were a critical step in narrowing their arrest to Rikers to deportation pipeline in New York City, but now, nearly a decade and three presidencies later, must be updated to address today's realities. Immigrant New Yorkers continue to be funneled into ICE's hands by New York City law enforcement agencies in violation of these laws. These agencies don't even hide their xenophobic contempt for immigrants nor their cozy personal relationships with ICE. I'm going to repeat what other people have said, that these people are literally writing emails where they say things like hashtag #TeamSendThemBack and write to ICE officers lol, "You are my boo for real," which is just sad to even see and text. I'm disturbed by the glee DOC officials exhibit when putting vulnerable people in harm's way, but I'm also not surprised. Sadly, such flagrant disregard for human life is inherent to these institutions, whose operations include surveilling, arresting, prosecuting, incarcerating, and killing the very same people the detainer laws are intended to protect. We have inherited a world that normalizes this type of state violence, where city law enforcement agency, agencies tout their relevance in forever increasing budgets because they're the protectors and arbiters of public safety, even though they inflict violence in the community every day. I'm also not surprised by these agencies' flagrant violations of law and life, because as a knife-up staff attorney at the Bronx Defenders, representing criminalized immigrant New Yorkers for the past five years, I have witnessed truly countless constitutional, statutory, and human rights violations of New York City's poor, black, and Latinx immigrant communities, the same communities who law enforcement agencies at issue here today demonize and dehumanize because they broke the law for being born without a US passport and committed a criminal offense. But I challenge the premise of criminality touted by these law enforcement agencies. What even is criminality when government agencies regularly violate the laws they are bound to follow? Where is the condemnation, let alone the consequences for them, that's for city agencies that subject other human beings to torture inside their jail cells, only to hand them over in chains to ICE's jails to face more torture and permanent exile? When does illegality by government institutions ever merit reparations to harm communities, which is effectively the goal and purpose of Intro 158? The testimonies and lived experiences that you heard today, I hope, will challenge you to think more holistically about public safety and more critically about what protect and serve even means to you as city elected officials. You are similarly tasked with the enormous responsibility of ensuring safety and protection for the people of New York. I hope this hearing amounts to more than mere condemnation of these agencies, because condemnation means next to nothing without concrete action to shrink the arrest to Rikers to deportation pipeline that funnels New Yorkers, who are from the poorest and working-class communities of color, into these human cages by ICE. We may have inherited the prison industrial complex from generations prior, but we live in the world today as people with the power to create real public safety for all of us, including our most vulnerable communities. Both Intros 184 and 185 aim to end DOC and NYPD communication with ICE, so we never have to read a sentence like "You are my boo for real" ever again from a DOC official in an email to ICE. And to also close the regularly exploited loopholes from the 2014 detainer laws, I urge you to pass these bills, sponsored by Councilmember Powers, as soon as possible. I also urge you to pass Councilmember Hanif's bill, Intro 158, which would be the nation's first-of-its-kind material consequence for law enforcement agencies that violate local laws intended to protect immigrant communities. More broadly, I urge you to prioritize the health and safety of the people of New York, who are counting on you to create meaningful barriers between their lives lived in chains and cages and their lives lived freely.
Good afternoon. My name is Taina Wagnak, and I am an Haitian immigrant, as well as the Senior Manager of State and Local Policy for the New York Immigration Coalition, which is an umbrella policy and advocacy organization that works statewide with over 200 immigrant-serving member organizations. Thank you, Chair Hanif, and the City Council for convening this hearing and putting forth this groundbreaking legislative package, including Intro 158-a, 184, and 185 regarding limiting communication between city law enforcement agencies and federal immigration authorities. Almost nine years ago, the Council passed groundbreaking legislation that removed immigrant ICE from Rikers and prevented DOC and NYPD and DOP from unlawfully detaining immigrant New Yorkers without a judicial warrant. These detainer discretion laws were intended to end the warrantless and unconstitutional detention of immigrants, and it is very clear from today's testimonies that they have not. And although the NYPD and DOC have repeatedly stated that they have been in compliance, we do know that is not true, and we're not surprised at all that they're refusing to take accountability and also support immigrant communities. Rather, what we have been seeing is the fluid transfer of custody between DOC and ICE under the purview of the notification exception. Throughout the years, DOC and NYPD have repeatedly and blatantly violated the detainees' law as they read the request for notification, as simply permitting notification and transfers for custodies to ICE without a judicial warrant, as long as the individual were either convicted of a crime or identified as a possible match on the terrorist watch list. Intro 184 and 185 will rectify this issue and close this loophole permanently. In addition, Intro 1584 will provide prime financial relief by allowing individuals who were unlawfully detained by the NYPD in ICE to be able to receive payment for the family separation anxiety that they have experienced while in a detention facility. And more importantly, I will be remiss to not take the opportunity to ask the Council to call for the swift passage of the New York For All Act, which is Senate 984, 987 in the Senate House. As we all know, New York For All will ensure that state and local law enforcement and other resources are not used to support ICE deportation agenda, which is targeting and separating New York immigrant families and soaring fear in our communities. This is a common sense legislation that will protect the rights of immigrant New Yorkers and enhance public safety for everyone. All New Yorkers benefit when state and local government use their limited resources to serve their communities rather than carrying out a federal immigration deportation agenda. In addition to so, historically, ICE has long relied upon state and local enforcement agencies to find immigrants who may be removable, and it is our duty and our task to put an end to such. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Zach Ahmed. I'm a Senior Policy Counsel at the New York Civil Liberties Union. First of all, I just want to thank the Council and Chair Hanif for holding today's hearing. New York is very casually sometimes referred to as a sanctuary city, but it's much less often we actually step back and look at what that means, and so it's very important that this is happening, and I'm hoping it won't be the last. We've submitted written testimony that kind of outlines comprehensively our support and feedback for the legislation before the Council, and my colleagues have done a very thorough job of testifying to some of the ways in which the law is not being upheld as is. In the couple of minutes I have here, I actually want to lift up a few additional points about the city's disentanglement laws that I've heard less about today and that I think just shouldn't go overlooked. So at the beginning of the hearing, in some of the opening statements, there was mention of Local Law 228 passed in 2017. It's also sometimes referred to as the City Resources Law. Whereas the detainer laws deal with the specific context of people who are in city custody, being transferred into ICE custody, Local Law 228 broadly prohibits all city employees and officers from using city resources, which includes their time on duty, to assist immigration authorities in any way. And so the aim of that law, when it was enacted a few years ago, was to plug any holes in the legal landscape and comprehensively disentangle, not just law, disentangle not just law enforcement, but all city agencies from immigration enforcement. It's intended to cover all those situations that the detainer laws don't reach, such as when ICE is conducting a raid and they call on the NYPD to block off the street or provide some kind of crowd control, or when ICE calls ACS and asks for information on a parent who has an Article 10 family court case pending, or situations in which, you know, ICE agents have been spotted at protests or in the field, seemingly working with NYPD agents. Local Law 228 is arguably the most far-reaching of New York City's disentanglement laws, but it sometimes gets overlooked in these conversations. And so I just want to uplift that law and make sure that, you know, we're also paying attention to that. There are ambiguously worded exceptions built into the law that allow for cooperation with ICE. We don't know how those are being interpreted or how they're being invoked in practice. The reports that come out about the city's compliance with Local Law 228, similar to the detainer laws, is often bare minimum, contains the bare minimum information and leaves a lot of questions unanswered about whether or not agencies are even aware of this law or taking their obligations seriously. And so while we're talking about the full slate of the city's laws intended to disentangle from immigration authorities, I want to make sure that doesn't get lost in the mix. And we would welcome the opportunity to work with the Council on laws that would plug the holes in those laws as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I do want to acknowledge that we were previously joined by Councilmember Wrestler, and we have been joined by Councilmember Sanchez. Any questions? Thank you. We'll now move on to the next panel. We have Tanya Matos, Nathan Yaffe, Isabel Muehlbauer, and Lindsay Nash. I believe Tanya is on Zoom. You can begin when the sergeants call time.
Starting time.
Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Tanya Matos. I'm the Director of Advocacy and Policy at Envision Freedom Fund, formerly known as Brooklyn Community Bail Fund. I am testifying today in support of Intros 184, 185, and pass, and supportive of passing Intro 158. As a formerly undocumented person with a prior deportation order, this issue is truly personal. My family and I lived with the fear of being stopped by police every day, and one day I was stopped by two police officers from the 110th PC in Corona, Queens. They debated, they debated whether to take me in for not having an ID on me and for riding my bicycle on the sidewalk. Fortunately, they decided to let me off with a warning. Though I'm grateful for the first round of detainer discretion laws passed in 2004, they do not go far enough. As an advocate and activist, I met dozens of people who are currently detained at Orange County Jail, Batavia Federal Facility, or were detained at Hudson, Essex, or Bergen County Jails in New Jersey, many of them New York City residents who wound up there after some form of interaction with NYPD. some form of interaction with NYPD currently. Working at the intersection of the criminal, legal, and immigration systems, Invision Freedom Fund is aware that providing meaningful responsive mechanisms to protect immigrant New Yorkers from ICE's abuses, as well as the abuses perpetrated by DOC and NYPD. In paying bond for detained New Yorkers and providing support services to people once they have been released from these detention centers, we've heard many, many stories of people whose interaction with NYPD was followed by ICE showing up to their house days later. One person had the police call on him because he was accused of stealing a sandwich from a bodega. He was interrogated and released, but only to find ICE at his door days later. Another person-
Thank you. Time expired.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Nathan Yaffe, followed by Isabel Muehlbauer, and then Lindsay Nash. Nathan, you can go ahead when the sergeants call time.
Starting time.
My name is Nathan Yaffe. I'm an immigration attorney, and I'm here to talk about being realistic. I want to urge you all to pass these measures, but also be realistic about who runs our jail system and their relationship to ICE. As usual, we've heard lots of numbers during this hearing, but DOC numbers are suspect. I have here a bail receipt from a friend who I posted bail for in 2018. DOC wrote that an ICE detainer prevented them from releasing this individual, who was held for an extra 24 hours and only released after a lawsuit threat. Now, earlier, Paul Scheckman from DOC sat here and said, "Those were the bad old days. The past is the past," and he repeatedly relied on DOC's ICE reports for each fiscal year to say that. But when I go to DOC's ICE report for fiscal year 2019, the year my friend was held, it says that zero individuals were held by DOC for extra time as a result of civil immigration detainers in that year. But that's false. I have documentation showing that's false. I have personal knowledge of two other cases when people were held during that time. So when Mr. Scheckman sits here and says, "I'm looking at numbers from new reports, and there aren't any transfers or delays in release," well, the reports used to be false, and there's no reason to think they're more reliable today. Meanwhile, we have testimony about ongoing violations, and the only response has been, "Someone else is to blame." So when I say be realistic, I mean acknowledge that the extent of DOC and ICE collaboration is far greater than the numbers suggest, and that COs who have repeatedly and unequivocally expressed their allegiance to ICE are continuing to find ways to collude. Which brings me to the second way I'd like to ask you to be realistic. Pass these measures, yes, but be realistic in recognizing that there's no tweak you can make to the detainer law that will end this collusion for good. The problem is Rikers in the tombs. These COs, who understand their mission as fundamentally aligned with ICE's, will absolutely carry that problem into the new jails that they get built and open. The problem is our criminalization system, marking people as disposable or undesirable in the eyes of these COs, NYPD, and if we're being honest, in the eyes of many of you in City Council. NYPD and COs are frontline soldiers for ICE in this city. So in addition to passing these measures, I urge you to recognize this basic structural reality-
Thank you. Time has expired.
And shrink the criminalization machinery in New York City. Thank you.
Thank you. Isabel, you can go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Isabel Mobauer, and I'm an advocacy coordinator for Latino Justice Pearl Death, a national civil rights organization dedicated to ensuring that the Latinx community is treated with dignity, justice, and fairness. I'm here to testify in favor of Intro 184, 185, and to enthusiastically support Intro 158. In particular, to speak in favor of the proposed version, providing that no officer can hide behind qualified immunity when sued for illegally trying to get someone deported. Collusion between immigration enforcement officers and local law enforcement has rightfully been illegal in New York State for years. In 2017, Latino Justice Pearl Death sued the Suffolk County Sheriff's Office for its unlawful practice of keeping people incarcerated after they have posted bail, based solely on administrative detainers from ICE. Law enforcement officers engaging in this illegal conduct are trying to control vulnerable populations through fear. Fear that you could be transferred to immigration authorities for reporting a crime, for being victim of a crime, or for a simple violation like jaywalking. Unfortunately, it is not enough to amend city law to make it clear that NYPD and DOC cannot contact ICE without a judicial warrant. There must also be private right of action, and qualified immunity cannot be a defense to an action. In 2019, Javier Castillo Maradiaga, who we heard, whose mother we heard from today, and a DACA recipient, was illegally held in a federal detention center for 14 months after being arrested for jaywalking. At that time, I was also a DACA recipient, and while it is difficult to express the chilling effect that Javier's story had on me and the entire documented community in New York City, it does not even compare to the horror that he endured during his 14 months of detention. Due to the lack of private right of action in city law to sue the NYPD or the DOC for this illegal conduct, and because of qualified immunity and related federal doctrines that prevent him from suing ICE, he was left with no legal remedy for being kidnapped and imprisoned for over a year and nearly deported. Providing a private right of action is the only way to protect people like Mr. Maradiaga, and the only way to hold the NYPD and DOC officers who violate the law accountable. We have seen this before and know that there is no way for them to be held accountable. They will continue to break the law. Additionally, for any private right of action to be effective, it must contain a provision that qualified immunity is no defense to an action. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lindsay Nash. Lindsay, you can go ahead when the sergeants call time.
Starting time.
Good afternoon. My name is Lindsay Nash. I'm an Associate Professor and the Co-Director of the Catherine O. Greenberg Immigration Justice Clinic at Cardozo Law. Today's hearing and the legislation proposed serve as recognition of the critical nature of the city laws that seek to disentangle city functions from federal immigration enforcement. These laws have been incredibly impactful, but it has also become, fortunately, clear that these laws are not perfect and their implementation is not perfect. The city can and should do more, and the bills today are an important step in doing so, not only for the city and its residents, but also for the movement for immigrant protective legislation nationwide. I'll focus today on Intro 158, which would provide a private right of action, and in so doing, create a critical first-of-its-kind mechanism for ensuring that the city's immigrant protective laws play the vital role that the City Council intended. First, a private right of action would be an important way to impose accountability when local officers and agencies violate these laws. This is something that, as the violations described today make all too clear, is unfortunately necessary to ensure that these officers and agencies are complying with the letter and the spirit of the laws that the council has adopted. Second, the bill provides an important way to place the power to hold these officers accountable in the hands of those who have been harmed. As this stands now, the people who have experienced devastating harm and do little more than call on the city to recognize and redress these violations. But as the repeated violations, the city's failure to provide information about these violations, and the obfuscation have shown, that's not enough. Have to empower those who have been harmed with more meaningful ways to take action. Third, this legislation plays an important transparency-inducing function. It creates a way to bring these disputes into court with all of the truth-seeking mechanisms that entails, and it gives the people harmed new tools to obtain evidence of the violations. And perhaps most importantly, it means that the interpretation of these laws will no longer be left to the law enforcement officers who are supposed to be bound by them. It will allow neutral parties, judges, to play this-
Thank you. Time has expired.
...role, just as they do in many other areas of law. And I would like to end just by applauding the city for considering this and applauding Councilmember Hanif for sponsoring this visionary legislation.
Thank you. Next, we have Eileen Mayer, Jeffrey Deskovich, and Fabiola Harford.
Starting time.
Fabiola, you can go ahead. I do not see the other-
Okay. Can you hear me? Good morning, almost noon, everybody. So thank you for having me, and thank you for hosting this session. I think it's very important to discuss and be transparent about the situation. I hear a lot of issues that are pointing me to oversight. It seems to me like the issue is an oversight issue and a procedural issue, also an issue of liaison with DHS agencies. I oppose these bills, first because I think they are flawed and the wording actually state that the immigration detainers, the I-247s, are civil actions. That is false. Immigration and Nationality Act, the U.S. Code, and the Code of Federal Regulations are no civil laws. So this is false, and it needs to be reviewed. Second, it is the matter, as an immigrant and as a victim of an illegally present alien who chased me, stalked me, until he assaulted me and raped me, I oppose the facilitation of the release of criminal aliens. I don't know of any of the panel members or the council members have ever been raped or victim of a crime by an illegal alien. It is a horrible experience that can never measure up to a few days or a few months in a detention center. So I must oppose these laws. I think that it's a lot of work to be done, especially on the oversight area, on the knowledge and the education of immigrants, on the knowledge of the council members, of the priorities for ICE to exercise prosecutorial discretion and deportation. I've seen a lot of lack in that area. I even hear one of your council members asking for how a person is removed after 20 years. If the person entered the country illegally, that person is removable. It doesn't matter how many years the person has in the country. So I think that there are a lot of education that is needed. There is also the fact that a new bill is pending in Congress that is going to enforce the detainers.
Thank you.
It's going to be a matter of law, and it needs to be taken into consideration before the decision about these bills are made. Thank you so much.
Thank you. If we had inadvertently missed any witnesses, please see the sergeant-at-arms to sign a witness slip to testify, or if you are on Zoom, please use the raise hand function to let us know we have missed you. Seeing no additional witnesses, Councilmember, or Chair, I turn it back over to you.
Thank you so much, Jay Sri. Thank you to everyone who made today's hearing possible, while DOP, DOC, NYPD assured us that they are in full compliance with the city's detainer laws. The emails foiled, along with the testimony from countless legal services providers and impacted New Yorkers clearly articulate the egregious violations and how they've aided, continue to aid, the federal deportation machine. We must close the loopholes of the detainer laws and pass Intros 158, 184, and 185, which will reassert our city as a true sanctuary city while delivering justice to families like Almas, Daniels, and countless others, and especially in the wake of welcoming asylum seekers. And yes, we must also pass the New York For All Act at the state level. A resolution was passed last year in this council to show our affirmative support. Thank you all so much, and I will gavel us out. Thank you.